Good evening. It is five P M., and so we will call the regular board meeting for the sixteenth of April twenty twenty five to order. Our first order of business is usually to go into closed session. We do have a couple items on the closed session which people have requested to speak. So is there any public comment on the closed session agenda? Again, since we do have a couple of speakers signed up, we will give them say five minutes or so to show up. Is that reasonable?
I think so. I agree that it won't.
I'm aware, yeah. And then, of course, I assume that we can fit them in at the items from the floor or one of the other moments. They had their timing wrong. Seem reasonable? Okay. All right, seeing as there are apparently no speakers for this item, we will adjourn to closed session back at six. Good evening.
Hello, everyone. Thank you. Welcome to the April sixteenth, twenty twenty five regular board meeting of the Chico Unified School District's Board of Trustees. We have been in closed session during which no action was taken. At this point, before we start our regular business, I would like to ask you all to rise for the flag salute. Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Wicked State, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Superintendent Staley?
Well, we've been hearing a lot from our elementary schools, and tonight, we're going to switch it up, and we are going to hear from our high schools. So we are going to start off with Chico High, the mock trial, and Casey Massis is going to introduce that. And team.
Hi, I'm Casey Massis. I am an English teacher at Chico High, and I'm the teacher coach.
Hi, my name is Annalisa Pedrinazzi. I'm a sophomore at Chico High, and this year I was the secretary of the club, and I've just been elected as the president for next year.
Hi, my name is Kaylee Moorhead. I'm a senior at Chico High, and this year I'm the vice president of mock trial, and I was also a founding member.
Hello, my name's Alicia Hahn, and I am the founder and president of Mock Trial. So Mock Trial is a club that anyone can join at Chico High, where we essentially get this fake criminal case from the Teach Democracy Foundation, and we use it to prepare for a mock trial competition against other schools. And it's essentially like having an extra class. We have homework, and we have meetings after school and meetings during lunch, where we work with local attorneys to learn about the process of a criminal trial, and we study and analyze our case packet, and we prepare for our arguments on the actual competition day. Mock Trial really helps students to learn about the judicial process in our country, and also to improve their communication and their critical thinking skills, and it also just improves our value of civic engagement as a whole.
As the teacher coach, I have given seventy hours of work for the club to prepare to run the meetings. This year, we really wanted to win, and so I put in a lot of extra hours to make sure that we were ready for the competition.
In twenty twenty four, we were the underdogs. None of us had any experience, including our coaches, and we were up against the reigning champions, Los Plumas. And yet, we tied with eight hundred and twenty seven points. And this year, after just one more year of practice and new experiences, we blew LP out of the water, winning by over a hundred points. Thank you. And in addition to that, thirteen out of our fifteen members won individual awards, and Judge Rodriguez compared our skill to that of college teams.
Mock Trial itself does have some financial expenses. We have registration fees in order to be a part of the competition. We have to pay for transportation to get to Orville because it is hosted at the courthouse in Orville. And then I also supply snacks for the students in order to make sure that they are academically ready, since we meet until five fifteen, sometimes five thirty in the evening. To go to the state competition, which we had the ability to go to this year, just for registration fees and hotel rooms, it was going to be over four thousand dollars, and that doesn't include the cost of transportation to get to L.A. Unfortunately, this year, we were not able to attend due to the timing of our spring break. It negatively impacts our chances of being able to attend because, obviously, parents want to take their students on trips, and they have those planned in advance, and so unfortunately, a lot of our team could not go.
So currently, Mock Trial is the only opportunity for, that offers students the first firsthand civic experience at Chico High School. It allows students to explore the legal field in a practical and engaging way. So it helps them develop their critical thinking skills, their public speaking, and their teamwork development skills. So I started Mock Trial as an op, to try to explore my own interests. And through that journey, I discovered that, funny enough, I actually want to be an engineer. I want to be an engineer and pursue the science and math topics. And this program has really helped myself and, I think, other students as well to find their own path, whether that be in law or something else. And it gives them the space to grow and explore different opportunities that they may not be able to really have a chance to do with our current classes and programs at Chico High School. Thank you.
Mock Trial has helped me with a lot of things, but one of the major ones was definitely my confidence and my public speaking skills. For comparison, during my freshman year, in my biology class, I was asked to give a presentation, and I went up there and I cried in front of the class while I was speaking. But now I'm here, speaking in front of the school board, so, and I attribute that growth to Mock Trial, for sure. I think it's helped me a lot.
Mock Trial has also helped me immensely in a number of areas, but most importantly, it helped me develop my critical thinking skills. Prior to joining this club, I was only ever able to see my point of view. But through Mock Trial, I'm now able to objectively assess the situation, consider all the perspectives from an unbiased point of view, and form an educated opinion from there. This will not only help me as I continue with Mock Trial, but also as I enter adulthood and have to navigate my way around the world.
Thank you for your time, and here's some pictures from our competition.
I have a quick question. At the very beginning of your presentation, you mentioned where you get your framework for what you're going to do. What again was that entity?
You mean like the company? Is Teach Democracy, the Teach Democracy Foundation?
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
And this is put on through the Butte County Office of Education. So I work with Mary Ellen there, and she provides us with the case packets that are created through Teach Democracy. And so every school in California that competes, we all have the same case, and the cases are ambiguous to a point. So you can argue for a guilty or not guilty verdict. It's up to the students to have to create the case that they want.
Thank you. I'm very proud of you guys. Good work.
So moving right on over to Pleasant Valley High School, Mr. Steve Huff and Lauren Green to talk about art and computer science.
Thank you, guys, for having us. Thanks to our school board members. We want to give you a little insight into a project that Mr. Huff and I have kind, well, we're still developing it. I'd say we've just launched it within the last week or so, and we kind of hoped we were a little further along to be able to present this to you guys. But things take time, and we're figuring stuff out. So without any further ado, I'd like to let our students introduce themselves to you.
I am Owen Wallsman, and I'm going to be representing the graphic art design portion of this presentation for the students.
I am Xavier Mathi, and I'm going to be representing the AP Computer Science students.
So Mr. Huff and I kind of, I don't know, joined forces haphazardly. He helped me learn my laser engraver, and then we started kind of geeking out over the fact that we see a huge connection between tech and math and the arts, and that that's sort of, in the real world, that's where it all kind of comes together. So this whole year, we've been spending a lot of our collaboration time together, talking about how we could merge our programs. We're really excited to kind of pilot this program, and then as we launch into next year, Mr. Whitaker has really been supportive of us collaborating or combining our two sections to be the same class period, so we can kind of merge this and continue with it into the future. So I'm going to let our students kind of, well, I think, I guess we're next, right? So go ahead.
I'm Stephen Huff, since I haven't actually introduced myself just yet. It's okay. So as Lauren said, we kind of just haphazardly got merged together, didn't really know who she was, just knew she was the art teacher. And then we started having, you know, conversations about the computer science and the arts and how they could potentially play together. And so the motivation for this is basically centered around video game design, and students tend to like video games and play them at school when, you know, they have free time only, not during lessons or anything as such. And so, and most video games that they play are pretty simple. They are like side scroller types and things like that. And so we kind of had this thought that it would be nice to elevate them from being just simply squares or rectangles and circles to being like actually animated and having some like, you know, texture to them to make them a little easier to look at and more fun to play, that kind of thing. Now, the relevance to this is just that the video game industry is like kind of just, it's booming currently. It's projected to, I think, double its revenue by twenty twenty seven, which is like in the hundreds of billions of dollars. And the other aspect And the other aspect of it is that it gets students working together and talking to each other. And obviously, we want that since most of the working world now is collaborative in effort. You have a main focus and then, but you have to put main focuses together to create your final projects or your final pieces. And so, then the future goals of this is that I was a part of, another person and I were awarded the Golden State? Golden State Grant or something, pathways, pathways. So, I'm a math teacher by trade, so I'm not really super savvy with the CTE world and like receiving money to do stuff that's like extra cool at school. Not to say mine isn't cool, but this is extra cool. And so, the future plans to this would be, we're going to be designing like a robotics style course and we can, we were actually spitballing ideas this morning about how we could potentially continue our collaboration. And I just put some like simple graphics as a, as a, an idea where we have like a prototyping idea. So, that's just like the drawing, it's the idea, you know, what you're thinking it's going to look like. Then, the next stage would be your, your first viable prototype or your, you know, your proof of concept that everything will work together. And then, the third version, which would be, you know, the, the final product that would be marketable, which is where Lauren and I think that we could extend into that, that space so that her art students can help us make the components and the wires look nicer and more pleasing. And so, that's basically our whole piece. They, these two were great. They basically did all of the stuff independent of us and then we needed two people and so we just immediately grabbed them. So, they, they are further along in our project than we are. So, this is going to be great.
They're going to tell us where we're going.
So, I would like to summarize what our graphic design students are going to do for this project. And they're going to create sprites, which are like two dimensional textures or animations, like images, that the computer science students are then going to use in their own game that they're going to be making. And these are some examples that students have currently made in the class. And what this assignment is going to teach the graphic design students and why this could be valuable is because they're going to learn a few like necessary skills to go further up into the graphic arts and the graphic design, which is going to be animation, collaborating with a client and other skills such as that. So, that's what we're kind of trying to have them learn right now is mainly animation is like a big focus of this project. So, those are some more examples.
I'm just going to interject. I just started animation like two days ago and so these are like just their first like two days, two days of learning how to do this. So, we're launching up, but yeah, it's, it's funny and we're just in the start of it, yeah.
And I think that the art is a really important part of the video games. You could argue it's like the most important part because as someone who grew up on video games, for better or for worse, I think that probably the most important part of the video games is how they look. Not necessarily quality, but like the feel or like the kind of tone of the video game. Most video games all have their own style. There's not really that many that blend together. So, I think that's a really important part for game making and I think that having students that excel in this like little niche of making their designs and their own, you know, ideas and actually being able to put them into games, I think that that's going to be really beneficial for them and open up a lot of opportunities for them in the future. And I'll let Xavier take over.
So, what our computer science students will be doing is they have been tasked with coding and creating a fully functional game from scratch. We've spent this year learning how to code and using JavaScript and as of right now, we're using a game engine called P5 Play, which is very beginner friendly and it's, it's been working very well for us so far. So, why collaboration is important is because it gives our artists a way to actually see their art come to life and it gives our coders a way to actually see their code come to life. So, it's a perfect kind of mesh of these two different genres to basically create something that's really cool. And points to students is that it has a lot of very real world applications. So, our students learn art or like animation and design and game students learn how to actually code, which can be used for many different things in this rising world of electronics. So, just as an example, this is something that I've coded without any sprites or anything. It's very kind of like rudimentary. It's just squares and colors and it's boring. Like you can do, you could do as much as you want, but it's not fun to play. But when you add sprites, it kind of brings this life to it where you can actually see things happen and you can, it gives a feel like Owen was saying, that you can actually enjoy this game and not just see a bunch of squares move around. So, that's kind of the end goal. This is kind of, this is a very rudimentary design, but yeah. And basically, this entire code right here codes for the entirety of the visuals. So, it's a very impressive and intricate thing that a lot of people don't know how to do and I think it's very cool that our students are learning how to do this. I think that's all. Is there any questions?
Less questions and more, I mean, I could talk about this forever. People don't know this, I was in graphic design for a long time and then I taught technology. We used Scratch to teach coding, but it seemed like it's a very similar thing. I'm just super excited to see this coming to fruition. A question for staff, actually. Do we have an actual class coming forward for next year that will encompass all this or?
Like, like a computer science course?
Yeah, this is all going to wrap into one course, right? Next year or is this?
This is still just a collaboration.
Just a collaboration with the two of you, okay, okay.
So, she'll still be doing her.
But goals for the future.
Yeah.
Goals for the future, yeah. So, Steve has an AP Computer Science class and he's really building that program. I have the, more of the digital graphic design classes. And I think the way that we see this is that, at least for me, my first semester's fall will be like teaching a lot of fundamental stuff. This will still be in my beginning level students. So, some of the stuff that you're seeing in the students that are working on this, all levels of, of everything. And, and then second semester, we will be kind of partnering game designers with animators and they'll be, I think this year is just kind of our pilot, see what it looks like. But next year, spring would, I think really this is where it would take off, that we would be, and we're lucky to be able to do that.
I understand, thank you. This is an amazing project, thank you very much.
Thank you so much, yeah.
No, it was great. Thank you. I just want to add, our students never cease to humble me, just from the art to the technology to what you're doing at the courthouse, very, very impressive. So, thank you and huge thank you to our staff for leading that. And while we're still with secondary, I would like to invite Ms. Erica Sheridan, principal of Chico High School, to the podium.
All right, well, this evening, hi, I'm Erica, principal of Chico High, like she said. I am super excited to be able to have two different superintendents awards to present to you tonight. I, can I bring them up? Can I do, okay, can I? This is her. So, it is my great honor to present the superintendent's award to someone who is truly the heartbeat of our school, our incredible office manager, Terry. She's been in Chico Unified for 15 years. She has been a Viking at Pleasant Valley, a dragon at Neil Dow, a gator at Marsh and now a panther with us at Chico High. From the moment the doors opened in the morning to the last phone call of the day, Terry handles every challenge with grace, professionalism and a warm smile. She keeps our school running like a well-oiled machine, often juggling a dozen tasks at once without missing a beat. She not only manages our school's complex budget with precision, but also ensures every classroom is covered by organizing substitutes and handling daily coverage needs with ease. Her dedication to both the 200-member staff and 1,850 students is nothing short of inspiring. Whether coordinating schedules, supporting families or solving problems behind the scenes, she does it all with care. She's often the first face people see and the last to leave, making a lasting impact every single day. Her work might not always be in the spotlight, but is absolutely essential to our success. We are so grateful for her tireless commitment and positive spirit and her wicked sense of humor. Please join me in congratulating Chico High's exceptional office manager, Terry Barth Duke, on this well-deserved recognition.
Thank you.
Thank you, welcome. I told her she had to give a speech. Well, another exemplary staff member at Chico High is classroom teacher Tammy Taylor and it is my honor to present the superintendent's award to an educator whose dedication, versatility and impact has reached far beyond the gym walls. With over 20 years in the profession, Tammy has served at numerous Chico Unified schools as a physical education teacher, including Bidwell and Chico Junior, Pleasant Valley and currently Chico High. In addition to teaching PE, she's been a volleyball and a basketball coach and currently, she serves Chico High as the junior varsity girls volleyball coach. During her time at Chico High, Tammy also earned her CTE credential and has built two different career tech pathways, medical patient care and education courses for students. Her programs are in high demand and we've had to include other teachers in the class loads to support the extreme numbers of signups for her classes. Tammy exemplifies what it means to educate the whole student, body, mind and future. In the classroom, Tammy sparks curiosity about the medical field, preparing students for real-world careers with knowledge, skills and passion. She seamlessly bridges community partnerships and academic rigor, creating a learning environment that is both dynamic and deeply meaningful. Her commitment to student success is matched only by her energy, enthusiasm and kindness she shows towards students and colleagues daily. She challenges her students to reach higher, think deeper and believe in their potential. Her ability to wear multiple hats while maintaining excellence in all she does is truly remarkable. Please join me in celebrating Tammy Taylor, our outstanding teacher, for this well-deserved superintendent's award.
Okay, I get to talk, yay. This, boy, this is really special for me because I got to work with Terry at three of the four locations and I, I know how dedicated she is and amazing and my time at Chico High was much smoother. Thanks you so much because she just showed me what to do and where to go. And then Tammy and I go way back to card volleyball, back in the day. Yeah, we got to work at PV together and so, well deserved. Makes me happy.
Thank you.
So, as we transition into announcements, we're doing something, trying something a little new here and it's really exciting. CSCA requested that they have the opportunity to recognize two of their own that they have selected and want to recognize, just give a little public spotlight to. And so, Kelly Searle is the one that came to me with this idea and we said, we can put this under announcements, we can announce who these wonderful individuals are because CSCA, our staff there truly does make school happen for so many kids. So, all you.
Thank you, Kelly. Thank you, Chico Unified and school board for allowing CSCA the opportunity to honor our member of the month. Classified employees are a vital part of all of public education and we are so grateful for this opportunity. This is member ran, so members did a survey and selected who they thought would be a great choice. I'd like to introduce Celia Bianco. She is CSCA Chapter 110, Chapter Communications Officer and she's going to introduce the members.
Hi, I'm Celia Bianco and it was really hard to choose out of so many strong candidates. And for March, we chose a woman named Amanda Hurd. Amanda is an instructional paraprofessional at Pleasant Valley High School. She, she was nominated by a coworker because she started a monthly collaboration meeting with the other instructional paraprofessionals who work in the mild to moderate classrooms and a lot of them come and attend this unpaid just so they can get better at their jobs and they want training. And they said that, they, they love it, basically is what I heard. And they said about Amanda, that we are better as a group because of her and she is truly an example we should all be following. So, we just wanted to recognize Amanda, please join me in telling her thank you. You know, your students thank you, the union thanks you and your coworkers thank you. All right, so that was March and now we have April. And April is Iklaas Giradi, who is a cafeteria assistant at Bidwell and she also has a supper program at Neil Dow. She was nominated by the cafeteria cook manager at Bidwell and the cafeteria cook manager says that Iklaas is always there to help and I really rely on her in my kitchen and that she loves interacting with the students. Lunchtime, I don't know if you've noticed this, can be a little bit chaotic and Iklaas really takes the time to connect with the students and, and make them feel comfortable. And the person who nominated her also said that Iklaas always goes above and beyond. So, thank you Iklaas for all you do.
And big thank you to Kelly Searle and Celia for recognizing the employees. It's always great to see our best and brightest out here recognized. So, with that, I'll turn it back to President Lando for other announcements.
Thank you. And with that, are there any other announcements from the board?
I have announcement.
Please.
I, I don't know if the community is aware of this, but I believe it was last month, the California State Superintendent released a list of distinguished schools that were honored in the state and there were 335 schools that were honored and one of our own charter schools, North Country School, which we partner with, with Chico Unified, was acknowledged as one of the California distinguished schools. So, I think that's a great honor and I believe the criteria used were academic success and basically exceptional student performance and basically, I guess the word would be like closing the gap within, with scores. Yeah, so I think that's exciting.
Yeah, I had the pleasure of attending some LCAP student input sessions. One was at Pleasant Valley High School and then one was at the District Office of Elementary Schools. And I just wanted to thank all of the elementary school principals for bringing the, the students and I wanted to thank those students. They gave such heartfelt and really pertinent information. And then I also wanted to thank the parents of those kids because what a delight they were to sit and listen to their feedback and it makes my heart happy to see such really wonderful individuals being raised in our community. I also had the opportunity to sit at Pleasant Valley High School for an AP, for AP research students to present their papers and it was absolutely amazing. The, the questions that AP students researched and then presented to a panel of three people. Doug Hessy is their teacher and he, for the college board, he's the only one that can actually ask the, the students. can actually ask the students questions, but they had to do an oral, like, response, a defense of their research. It was really interesting, and I want to say, thank, I wanted to thank Mr. Hessie for inviting us in.
Yeah, same. That was an amazing, those AP research projects were amazing, and he talked about your quiche the whole time. But yeah, it was an amazing thing to get to see. We have so much great stuff. It's really, I love starting off the meeting this way, where we get to celebrate the good things that are happening in our district and the amazing staff we have. So, thank you all for that. Do we have any other announcements? Seeing none. We are going to move on to items from the floor, but before we do, I'd like to request from the board that we, we had some speakers on Mark for Close session, and they were not here. I'd like to let those speakers speak on closed session items now, if that's okay with you guys? If you mind if we move that? Yeah? Okay, in that case, if they are here, could we start off with Jessica Montgomery? And though I suspect you know the rules, I just want to make sure the public does it well. You have three minutes, there's a timer back there. We will give you a 30-second warning or notice, just so you stay on track. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the board. I stand before you today as a concerned parent, citizen, and advocate for parental rights, constitutional integrity, and the mental health and well-being of our children, and in support of Aurora Regina. A mother who has had to fight this board tooth and nail to protect her child. Let me be clear, CUSD Board members' act of support of secretive policies that exclude parents when a child is struggling with gender dysphoria is not only unethical and violates federal law, including FERPA, which is why you are now in litigation for thousands of dollars. More importantly, it undermines the federal constitutional right of parents to direct the upbringing, education, and care of their children. I have your oaths, which I had requested as well through FOIA, to uphold the Constitution, oaths which you are currently failing to honor. This board majority has chosen to operate in secrecy with scripted platitudes and behind closed doors. I took the initiative to file a FOIA request to bring transparency where you refused to provide it. The Chico Unified School District is not in possession of any records as described in my request. The number of reports of violence or sexual assault against any school-age minor of the LGBTQ community within the past five years at CUSD. The number of reports of sexual assault or violence perpetrated by a CUSD minor of the LGBT community within the last five years onto another student. The number of reports submitted by students regarding abuse by their parents or guardians to school authorities, including a breakdown of how many of those reports were made by LGBTQ students within the last five years. The number of LGBTQ suicides reported within the district during the last five years. The total number of suicides reported within the district during the past five years. The data is not vague. Research consistently shows that individuals experiencing gender dysphoria face significantly elevated risk for mental health issues: depression at 35% to 70%, anxiety at 30% to 60%, suicidal ideation or attempts upwards of 40%, substance abuse significantly higher than the general population. These are not political talking points. These are medical realities. Yet, this board has adopted an ideological stance that assumes you are more qualified than actual parents like Aurora to make mental health decisions for children. This is not only insulting, it's legally indefensible. Your decisions rested on insufficient evidence, a false dilemma between secrecy and support, and an overly strict ideological standard with no legal or scientific basis. Tom Lando, you're a self-proclaimed history teacher who has publicly shamed parents about not having any skin in the game if they don't have a trans child, and quite frankly, you give me groomer vibes. You're no way more qualified to determine what is mentally healthy for my child or anyone else's. This board cannot pretend to be neutral. You're visibly and vocably left-leaning. It honestly wouldn't be surprising to me if some of you came in wearing hammer and circle pins. Yes, the community sees it. We see the bias, and we see the agenda. Let me remind you again, you have no legal claim over our children. Parents are not going to be silent anymore. Uphold the law, honor your oaths, and respect parents.
Thank you. We have another speaker on the same topic. Is Gina Bax here?
I am here today not only as a mother, but as a friend of Aurora Regina. I have known Aurora for many years, long before this case made national headlines. She was my girl's soccer coach, and she's also a nurse. Two things I greatly admire: soccer and first responders. When I heard what happened to Aurora and her daughter, my heart broke because I know Aurora. She's not a threat. She's not an activist looking for attention. She is a mom who wanted to be there for her child, and this board denied her that right. As a fellow mother, that's devastating. Now, instead of focusing our energy and resources on improving academic achievement and student safety, we are spending thousands of taxpayer dollars fighting this mom. And this case has put our district in a negative national spotlight. Aurora isn't asking for money. What she wants, and what thousands of parents want in this district and all over the state, is transparency, accountability, and open communication between schools and families. We want to support our kids not to be shot out of their lives. Secrets don't build trust. Silence doesn't protect children. Teachers have been put in the middle of lying to parents or get fired. This is unfair to all the wonderful teachers out there who want to teach our children academics. No wonder why many have left the profession. So, I'm asking you today respectfully to please agendize an item to further discussion the removal of this parental secrecy policy to avoid more legal challenges and waste of money. Thanks for your time.
Good job.
We will move on to Agenda Item 7, Items from the Floor. We do have several speakers listed here as well. Again, the same speaking rules apply. Items from the floor should be for items that are not agendized, and as such, the board has a policy of not responding or engaging. With that, we would love to hear from Michelle Cooper, please.
I'm here tonight not just as a parent, but as somebody who has been sounding the alarm on your so-called parental secrecy policy for over two years. And tonight, I am telling you plainly, this district must remove it immediately or prepare for a financial and legal reckoning. We now have federal precedent in the Aurora Regina versus Chico Unified School District case. The Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals revived a mother's lawsuit after this district socially transitioned her 11-year-old daughter without her knowledge or consent. That policy, your policy, denied a parent the fundamental right to direct the upbringing of her child, a right deeply rooted in our Constitution. The court made clear parental rights are not suggestions, they are protected by law. CUSD is no longer alone in this fight. Similar lawsuits have been filed in districts across California where parents are suing school officials for concealing gender, sorry, gender transitions. These legal actions are gaining traction, and they are costing school districts millions in litigation settlements and shattered trust. Even Secretary of Education Linda McMahon recently stated that California schools are violating FERPA, the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, by withholding information from parents. FERPA is federal law. It guarantees parents' access to their child's education records, including changes to name, gender, and pronouns. And when school districts willfully violate FERPA, they risk losing federal funding. That means millions of dollars gone just to maintain a policy that hides life-altering decisions from loving parents. Let me be clear, this is not about politics, this is about accountability, transparency, and respect. You owe me and every parent in this district a public apology. We stood at this podium two years ago and begged you to listen. Instead, we were ignored, dismissed, and labeled. Now the courts have spoken, the law is catching up, and you are on the wrong side of it. So, tonight, I urge you, remove this policy, restore parental trust, or prepare to watch this district bleed money in court and federal funding losses that could have been avoided with a single ounce of humility and common sense. The choice is yours.
Good job.
Thank you. Our next recorded speaker is Rob Berry.
Two years ago, as some of you on the board will remember, I stood here among a hostile crowd and warned you that your parental secrecy policy would cause legal problems for you. Since then, there have been decisions in Encino, Chino, Rockland, and of course, now the Regina case has been revived. While other parts of the country have already resolved many of these issues, the news is finally coming home to California. In addition to the federal government has declared that sex is determined at conception is binary, and despite the fantasy promoted in California schools, Title X, Title X, Title 10 cannot be nullified by state decree. Will Chico Unified School District be the last to give up the ghost and finally acknowledge that parents are the only people with their children's skin in the game? In addition to being on the wrong side of the legal issue, you are blindly out of touch with the values of your constituents. A poll taken by the New York Times, hardly a radical conservative voice, showed that the majority of Americans do not want transgender-identifying men in women's sports. It follows that they do not want them in their locker rooms or bathrooms either. Seventy-nine percent answered that men should not compete in women's sports. This number has increased from 67% just two years ago. Broken along political lines, 94% of Republicans and 67% of Democrats, and 64% of independent voters answered that men should not be in women's sports. Only 31% of Democrats believe that men should be allowed to play in women's sports. Those are your people. It is now the official position of the American government that biology supersedes gender-based fashion choices. Don't continue to embarrass yourselves. Change your parental policy now. Thank you.
Jessica Montgomery has signed up to speak on this item as well. Do you have? Okay, thank you very much. And Ms. Bax?
President Trump's recent executive order titled Keeping Men Out of Women's Sports mandates that educational institutions receiving federal funding must ensure that women's sports in locker rooms are exclusively for individuals assigned female at birth. Noncompliance could result in the withdrawal of federal funds. This is a concern as I personally know of one high school in Chico forcing girls to use lockers with biological males. Another executive order by President Trump instructs that any programs or activities receiving remaining Department of Education funds will not promote diversity, equity, and inclusion, and gender ideology. Which is again concerning as our schools, even at the elementary level, and in pursuit of the Menstrual Equity for All Act, also known as AB 230, schools most stocks, yeah, the schools most stock the bathrooms with menstrual products in boys' bathrooms, costing the district almost $25,000 a year. My other concern is the new ethnic study mandatory curriculum. As I took the time to review it, I was appealed by the amount of critical race theory and diverse equity and inclusion content, I'm sorry. The focus on colonization, race, equity, social justice, systems of oppression, climate change, resistance, environmental justice, segregation, and urge for activism, just to mention some, in this curriculum is concerning. In addition, this school board has adopted the Parental Secrecy Policy 5145.3 that clearly violates the Family Education Rights and Privacy Act, also known as FERPA. Therefore, this policy needs to be removed immediately. Also, our children are forced to take bias surveys behind parents' back that expose them to questions that are detrimental for their mental health, and doctors are allowed to speak at schools without parental consent. These actions undermine the parental-child relationship and deprives parents of involvement in a critical aspect of their child's youthful development. For the Chico Unified School District, federal funding constitutes a significant portion of its budget. These funds support various programs, including Title I, initiatives aimed at improving academic achievement for disadvantaged students. In summary, no compliance with the executive order could significantly impact Chico Unified financial stability and its ability to provide comprehensive educational services. The district will need to carefully weigh the implications of compliances versus the potential loss of federal funding. Thank you.
First, I want to say it's really disheartening that two years ago, I stood before you and shared concerns about males in the female locker rooms, and here we are again, still talking about this, when we should be talking about finding, or getting money for our resource officers that we no longer have funding for. I'm urging you to immediately repeal Policy 5145.3, which currently allows Chico Unified to withhold vital information from parents and to instead, adopt a parental notification policy that respects the rights of families and complies with federal law. The California Department of Education is currently under investigation for alleged violations of the Family Education Rights and Privacy Act, a federal law that guarantees parents' access to their children's educational records. The U.S. Department of Education has expressed serious concern that school districts in California are violating this act, and U.S. Secretary of Education Linda Mccone has formally warned the state of potential loss of funding if these violations persist. It is not the role of teachers, school staff, or counselors to make life-altering decisions for minors regarding their sexual identity or mental health behind the backs of their parents. That duty and privilege belongs to the parents or their trusted family members. It is immoral, unacceptable, and likely unlawful for the Chico Unified to keep parents in the dark about critical issues affecting their children. Further, Secretary Mccone has warned Governor Newsom to ensure California's compliance with federal law or risk violation of Title IX and the resulting withdrawal of federal educational funds. As a parent and community member, I know firsthand that Chico Unified is not providing sex-separated spaces as required, and this puts our students and our district at risk. According to the 2024-2025 Budget Report, Chico Unified stands to receive roughly $10 million in federal funding. Are we prepared to risk that kind of funding loss next year by ignoring federal mandates and continuing to violate parental rights? Have we learned nothing from the Regina case? The precedent is clear. When schools act in secrecy and violate the trust of parents, they not only put children at risk, they expose the district to legal consequences and financial disaster. It is time to restore transparency, accountability, and respect for parents in our schools. Please repeal Policy 5145.3 and adopt a parental notification policy that reflects our shared values and aligns with federal law. Thank you.
Do we have any other members of the public who would like to speak on this item or on item from the floor? Yes, please.
Good evening, everyone. I'm grateful to be here. This is my first time joining as a parent. I'm here as a parent. I'm also the leader of Latinos for Family Values. And last year, we did a stand in Sacramento called Don't Mess With Our Kids, and we did it all around the United States. And I'm grateful that President Trump has spoken in woke is dead. It's a new era for America, and I'm just here to tell you, the way you have done business is usual. It's not longer going to go. We're going to... We're going to do in respect parental rights, and we are going to get mental health for people that have, there are lesbians or homosexuals, because obviously, they have some mental issues. And it's a new era. I appreciate you guys, but I do think that you can't risk getting federal funding, and we stand for family values. It's a new era for Chico. God bless you.
Yes, of course, please.
I'm Loretta Torres. I've had, I've got grandchildren. I just have one now that is still in the school system at Chico Unified School District. I want you to know that, yes, two years ago, I too came here, and there was so many people for the transgender movement over there, sitting and intimidating sometimes the speakers. But I do want to tell you that I only see, now that we have science that actually says there are, DNA, when you're born, is DNA. It cannot be changed. It is a male and a female. Now, you can say whatever you want when children become adults, when they are gender, they're worrying about their gender when they're coming into puberty, which is normal. But to allow them to think they can have surgery before they're even adults to make these decisions, we're finding more and more studies that are showing the sadness that happens when whatever is bothering an adult even, after they've made these decisions to transform their bodies, they're more likely to commit suicide. Where the studies are clear, this is, ten years ago, we, this is a fad, you guys, in ten or twenty years, or even a hundred years, historic, history's going to say, this was a wrong choice for giving transgender children the information that they need, that they have, instead of giving them the ability to move through their puberty at an emotionally sound state and make decisions as adults. Please reconsider what you're doing to our children in the school system that you, I actually applaud you. You have our children's basic lives in your hands, and parents deserve to have an equal partnership with you. Please, listen to the parents in your school district. Thank you.
Are there any further speak around items from the floor? Seeing none, we're going to move on to item eight, which is our consent calendar and agenda. I believe that there is a request to pull one item from the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I would like to pull item eleven.
Sorry, I got to get organized for a moment. Forgive me.
The title is, um, Consideration of Textbook Request for Ninth and Tenth Grade English Language Arts, titled Study Sync.
Very good. Do any other items need to be pulled for further discussion? Seeing none. Do we have a motion regarding the consent calendar?
I motion that we approve the consent calendar.
Less the pulled item?
Without item eleven.
Hold a second.
All right. Any debate regarding the consent calendar? Seeing none, this is our first vote in public of the, first vote period of the evening. We'll go do a roll call vote. Can we start with you, Member Olson?
Olson, aye.
Conklin, aye.
Fernando, aye.
Hey, Si.
Robinson, aye.
It is unanimous. Thank you. Would you like to address item eleven?
Yes, thank you. I'm, was trying to get through the text. I'm, I'm one of those non-technical people that our students described the opposite of earlier, so bear with me if I, okay. One of the things that's in this item is that we are being asked to approve the Study Sync textbook for?
Ninth and tenth English?
Huh?
Ninth and tenth English, right?
Yes, ninth and tenth. And I asked the question because this issue is so important to me that, well, I'm sure it's important to everybody else, not just me. But as we have had such good luck, not good luck, a good experience with being able to help our students at the secondary level move from one school to another in order to facilitate their progress and their success with academics and social-emotional needs, one of the concerns was having what they've left at, say, at Pleasant Valley and gone to Fairview, and then after, say, a semester, move back to Pleasant Valley or Chico High, and whether or not there's a gap in what that course has covered. So that's my concern, and I have asked the staff to give us an explanation of what we are going to do in order to make sure that our students, as they move from one program level to another, it's not so much the level, program offering to another, to make sure that we're helping to fill those gaps and that this Study Sync program that we're investing a good amount of money in is going to help with that. So I'm actually asking Mr. Caldera to fill in the blanks.
Come on down.
Thank you so much for clarifying that question, because that, right there in itself, we're talking about the whole student, and we're also talking about the socio-emotional aspect of the student, and of course, the academic parts. So what, I want to address the socio-emotional part of it. Any student that comes from Fairview, comes from a very nurturing, not to say that Chico High or PV is not nurturing. However, the one-to-one contact with the adult, it's, it's a little bit more at Fairview. And so the support system that's existing there is a little bit more robust than it is at our comprehensive sites. So the transition there would be sitting down, the counselor sitting down and mapping out with the student what Chico High and/or PV is going to look like. And that all revolves around making sure that all our teachers on the same page, and not only that, but being, using the same lessons, making sure that their, you know, scope and sequence is all set. But more importantly, you shared with us the knowledge of the student. What do they know, and how that is transferred to the next school site? Well, one of the things that Study Sync does do is, and it was kind of interesting because you were saying textbook, textbook, and I was like, wait a minute, there's no textbook anymore in a sense, because it's all electronic license. Well, all the assessment information that's gathered from the student, the minute that they transfer to the next, all that information gets transferred with the student, and it follows them. And so a teacher at Chico High and/or PV, they could look at the student, see the levels that they're at, and address any concerns prior to them, or at least become knowledgeable of the concerns prior to the student actually being inside the classroom, so.
Thank you. That, we've spoken before, you know that this is one of my significant concerns, and being able to support in all of the areas, as you mentioned, our kids, because they, they need different supports at different points in their experiences with us as students. And so I'm appreciative of the fact that this is our model, that we intend to make us as part of moving into this project.
Yes, and I do want to say it is a project, because there's going to be a lot of professional development.
Yes.
That comes along with it. It's a total new curriculum, and it comes with a lot of electronic bells and whistles that a lot of our teachers, including myself, are not familiar with.
And I, I feel as a board member that once we uncover the intent and how we intend to implement, there seems to be more eyes watching to make sure that happens. And so, you know, that's, that's why I asked the question.
No, and that's a wonderful question, and now that I fully understand it, and I, and it would, I would be remiss if I did not share that Edgy Climber shares a great part of that.
Yeah, yeah.
Because we are talking about just English. But like I said before, we have to look at the whole student when student transitions from one school site to the next. And of course, to look at that whole body of the student work and get to know the student, well, that's where Edgy Climber comes in.
Well, I want our parents to know that we recognize that their students have different needs at different times, and that we are doing our best to meet the most significant need at, you know, the appropriate time. So thank you very much, and thank you too to the staff that's going to work on the in-service and stuff and implementing this, because there's going to be an awful lot of staff time involved in making this work.
Oh, yes.
So thank you ahead of time to our staff.
Yes.
So, so, so two questions. One, can you give us an idea of how many freshmen or sophomores are typically at Fairview? I'm just curious.
Okay, freshmen, very little.
I was going to, I was going to say.
Yes, below ten, yeah.
Okay. And sophomores, a little higher?
A little higher. That is correct.
And then it gets, it becomes more?
Exactly right.
Okay. I was just curious, because there won't, there may, there may be little transition back to a campus from Fairview.
True, but nonetheless, Rhonda Odlum, we've been in communication to make sure our teachers are also going to be trained and, and also be part of the adoption process and making sure that there is communication, because we do have students that do transition back at semester, and we want to make sure that they don't miss a beat.
So the other question that I have, so if this is mostly electronically based, what type of print materials and like supplemental materials are for students? Because I'm a huge believer in, as a reading teacher, I'm a huge believer in having actual print text.
Yeah.
For, for students to access, because not all kids work well. I mean, there's a lot of research about eye strain and all sorts of things for having just digital media.
So first and foremost, there, there is a tax that does come along with it, although I will tell you that most students are going to go choose the electronic version, ninth and tenth grade. However, when it comes to print, we are talking about novels. Study Sync does come with a choice of two levels, two novels for each grade level, and so teachers will be able to work with those, handprint and literature, address the literature component.
Do you happen to know what the novels are?
I don't, but Mr. Hesse is here, and I do know that Casey from Chico High is here, and so they might be able to address that. They've been in discussion about what novels are going to be chosen.
Awesome, thank you.
Hi, everybody. I'm Doug Essie at PV High. Nice to see some of you again, and some of you for the first time. It's been pretty exciting. I know Casey's department and our department's been having a lot of fun talking across our departments and within them about different possibilities for novel choices, and that's kind of ongoing right now. So some really fun discussions between teachers about, and exciting discussions about what texts to select, and so we're going to be choosing soon. There's been some early front runners and, but we're going to have a final decision pretty soon, and it's been some great, robust conversations about what makes a good text, and it's going to be fun to choose, yeah.
Thank you.
Casey, again, from Chico High. I do know one of the benefits of Study Sync for us is that there were units already for the books we already teach, and so that's a huge benefit, is we're going to continue to teach some of the same books. We just now have some more of that online support, and that's where we have modifications for students who are ELs, for IEPs, all of that sort of stuff that I typically spend hours doing. Study Sync is going to help me and other teachers do that, because it's all integrated in. And then I do know that for Chico High, so one of the books that we already teach is Night, and that's part of the Study Sync curriculum, and then we're looking at also getting Farewell to Manzanaar, because that's one of the books that we could get for our students to have as a component, so we could talk about not only what was happening across the world, but what was happening locally during that time. And then I know for tenth grade that they're looking at using possibly The Alchemist as another book. It has a unit about like moving forward and those types of things. So those are just two of the ones that we're looking at, but we're excited because it, it already matches what we do, we just now have more online support.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Thanks, guys. Any more discussion about this topic? And if not, do we have a motion regarding item eight-two-eleven, I believe is the number on it?
I move approval on the consent calendar of item eleven.
Seconded. Any debate on this one? Well, all those in favor of the?
No, we can. Go ahead.
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pedro. I believe that moves us on to the meat of our calendar today. Section nine is our Discussion Action Calendar. First item is 911, which is the Charter Review Committee's recommendation regarding Sherwood Montessori's charter.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Heather Sufuentes, Director of Elementary, and we are here tonight because Chico Unified is the authorizer of Sherwood Montessori, and the Executive Director, Michelle Yezbeck, is also here tonight. And where we are in the process of this is that Sherwood submitted their charter renewal to us for the 2025-2030 school year on January 15th, and then we had a public hearing on March 12th, and in between that time, the Chico Unified charter team has reviewed each of the sections of the charter and is making a recommendation to approve.
Very good. Do we have any questions from the board regarding this one for the, for staff?
Well, I think I do.
Please.
But I don't know what I don't know, so, or maybe I know what I don't know. On the proposed budget, it, that we received, it said like, what if number one? And, and I don't have the original one in my brain either, so what's the difference between the original and the what if number one? Because there were some fiscal concerns around overspending and what if?
Yeah, so that was different budget scenarios getting like increasingly what if uncomfortable if there were not enough students to have the budget fully realized as we are operating this year. So we had backup plan and worse backup plan and worse backup plan. But what was submitted in the time that's passed, we have a better picture now? I mean, we're all kind of making school budgets as, as a little bit of playing darts in the dark until you know what the governor's budget is going to actually be, and who is actually going to show up on the first day of school. So that's what those what ifs are. And my business manager is very conservative, which, you know, that's what you want in a school business manager. You're using public funds, so it's better to be safe than sorry. But we, we're breathing a little easier these days, yeah.
Thank you.
And I guess just to assuage my own curiosity, Heather and Jacqueline, I'm sure you've seen all of their numbers. You feel comfortable with everything that's in the, their financials?
Yeah, the main concern was the original enrollment projections we felt were a little bit aggressive given their historical trend as well as their attendance percentage. So how often those students who are in that enrollment actually attend every day? So we asked for a more conservative approach, what happens if, the what if, the students don't materialize in enrollment next year and asked that the attendance rate be lowered to 92%, which is much more of a historical percentage. As a result, as Michelle said, it would require a reduction in some of their staff and you can see that reflected in their financials. So based on the updated information that was provided, we feel that there's constant conversation going on at Sherwood and that they can sustain themselves over the next five-year period.
Thank you, that's good to hear. Do we have any public comment regarding this one? I don't see any. Given that, before we get into any deeper debate, do we have a motion regarding this item?
All motion to approve.
I'll second that, if you don't mind, sorry. All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any debate or discussion on this topic? All right, seeing none, I will, oh, sorry.
It's not debate or discussion, just noting that we are still within the timelines for Sherwood, even though we are doing this in a different sequence than the other two that were presented then, we're still within the timeline.
Yeah, absolutely. We did push it back to a little more due diligence. We are, as always, thrilled to partner with our charter schools. I'm excited to have you guys continue as a part of the Chico Educational Family, so. With that, may I call for a vote? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It is unanimous. Oh.
Nope. I'm going to ask now that that one's done and Heather's going to give me an evil eye right here, but with the permission of the board, could we move up Heather's next item, which is requesting board approval of the reading difficulty risk screener? It is, my understanding, Heather has a little bit of an emergency at home, so if we can get her through this one and let her out, I think that would make me feel better until Heather gets a hold of me for mentioning it.
No, I appreciate it. April's not the month for the SuFuentes family. It's when I snapped my Achilles and we had a track accident right before we came in. So everything's fine, though. We'll be good, but I do appreciate that.
So quick motion to suspend the rule so that we can adjust the agenda?
Some of it.
All those in favor?
Have another one?
Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, all right. So which item is this that we're looking at now?
Number three.
Nine one three? Okay, thank you. And then we'll head back to nine one two. Thank you.
All right, so with me tonight, I have our MTSS coordinator, Kristy Bankson, who has done exceptional work on getting the science of reading lifted off and working with our reading teachers and intervention teachers. So we are here to present on the reading difficulty screener and go through kind of our history of where we've been with it, where we are, and our next steps. Clicker. Okay, so this originated as a bill and then it's now become ed code. So back in 2023 in August, it was the Senate bill. And January of 2024, the screener panel discussion started and was chosen. And in May of 2024, we, the state started to review which screeners would be approved. In December, the panel released the list of the screeners and our expectation is that by June 30th of 2025, we have a board-approved screener in place for kinder first and second grade students. And then that will be something that we use annually for here on out. So we're really excited to share this because Chico Unified has a lot that has been in practice and in place over the past years. So one, we have been using our MTSS system, our S-Bits and our intervention teams to have screeners in place already. And so we have a system that we've been utilizing since 2012. I was a Moser Manos, sorry, switching languages here. So and the data, we use that really effectively across our site levels and our district level to make decisions on how we're doing, which students need specific interventions and how to fill in those holes. Those results are always shared with our families as well. And so what we've learned along this process is that this isn't necessarily the case for some of the districts around us or throughout California. They're just kind of starting to jump on board. So as this came out, we went, oh, my goodness, how great have we been doing and we're right on pace with where we need to be. So what the reading difficulty screener is and is not is really important. We've done work with our staff and with our admin team to decipher the differences between them. So really what it is, it is a way for us to grab information about students and how their progress is going. It helps to give a universal screener in place for all of our students. And then it, it puts a flag up if there's some extra interventions that are needed. What it's not, it's not an evaluation tool to decide whether or not somebody is going to move forward with an IEP or assessment or a 504. It's no such thing, there's no high stakes tied to it. It's more in the line of progress monitoring and making sure nobody falls through the tracks. So as Heather said, this is all fairly new within the last couple of years and actually the, the, the state approved four screener options and they released that list just at, just this past December with the expectation that schools will adopt and have it board-approved to start next school year. So when we were sharing this with our staff and with our teachers and our admin, I just wanted to kind of put the two timelines aside to show, again, what Heather had been saying is we've really been doing a lot of this stuff all along the way. So as she said, you know, at least since 2012, we've been doing, we've had a K5 assessment system with a variety of literacy assessments. In September of 2023, we hired, well, within that time, we hired elementary reading teachers. And then in September of 2023, we trained, I trained all of those teachers as well as our Title I teachers in the DIBELS, which stands for, and I'll get to that on the next slide, Dynamic Indicators of Basic Early Literacy Skills. And so because as intervention teachers, we need to know are our students progressing with the skills that we're teaching with them? And these DIBELS assessments or LECTURA for the Spanish version are not curriculum-dependent. So it's whatever curriculum we're teaching, are they still learning those basic foundational skills appropriate at their grade levels? So we started using it with our intervention team and then last year, we actually piloted it with one of our school sites because we knew this was coming, we just didn't know what screeners were going to be approved. And so Hooker Oak wanted to be the pilot site so that they could do it school-wide instead of our intervention team who was doing it with just the groups of students that they are working with. So last year, our DLC approved that Hooker Oak would do it school-wide and they've been piloting, piloting that this year alongside all of our intervention teachers. This past fall, we worked with the, the company Amplify, who houses the, like a digital assessment platform for these assessments. We worked with them to get all of that information transferred into Edgiclimber, as we heard before, to really give that whole picture view of the student. So we've done a lot of work with them to, to, to have our teachers be able to go to one spot to look for that information. And then the list was released in December and DIBELS was on the list. Yay, big yay. And so in February, we started sharing all of this information. Many, all of these slides are from the presentations we've shared with our staff and our administrators. And so in February, we started talking with our elementary administration team more in-depth about this particular assessment. In March, our District Wide Day was focused on sharing this information with our staff so we could get their feedback and questions they might have. And we're coming to you tonight hoping for an approval of the DIBELS screener for Chico Unified so we can start using it next year with our students. So what is DIBELS and LECTURA? Lots of acronyms, as you know. So like I said, DIBELS stands for Dynamic Indicators of Basic Early Literacy Skills. It's been around for a long time and heavily researched by the University of Oregon and it became more widely available in 2002. It's a collection of normed assessments that measure certain literacy, literacy skills at each grade level and it's actually available in kindergarten through eighth grades and then also in English and in Spanish. M-Class stands for Mobile Classroom. That's just the digital platform. I actually was using DIBELS in my previous school district and it was all paper pencil. And so then you have to, after each assessment, you know, kind of configure with the percentage and all of that stuff. So what M-Class does is it allows us to administer the assessments with our computers, click when the student is doing, you know, saying a wrong letter or a wrong word and then at the end, it's like this student falls within this, this particular range on that assessment. And then M-Class also generates reporting for teachers as well as reporting for parents to, to share, here's where your student is and here are some things that you can do at home to support the student. This is just a quick look at the different assessments. So the green bars, those are the different assessments. So everything from the very bottom, it says letter naming fluency. These are all key skills that we know students need to be, come readers, to phoneme segmentation, nonsense word fluency, word reading fluency, which is like high frequency words. And then oral reading fluency is like reading a passage. And then the MAEZ is actually a computerized one where they're given a passage and every so often, there's a word missing and they have to choose one of three words. So it's measuring their comprehension and their knowledge of vocabulary. And then you can see across the bottom, they're not administered at every grade in every trimester, but they, they kind of grow in difficulty with those skills along with the, the growth in grade levels. And then LECTURA has similar assessments, all in Spanish, again, starting from very foundational of syllable segmentation all the way up to the MAEZ and the oral reading fluency for those higher grade levels.
I wanted to interrupt to do two things. Number one, thank you for the Science of Reading lecture presentation that you did at the last board meeting.
Of course.
I, I learned a lot. I, I just, you know, you think you know, but when somebody else puts it in front of you in black and white and he goes, yeah, that's what I thought, I knew. And then the other, in reading this presentation in the board packet, I learned a new word. I had to look it up. I was so proud of myself that I took the time and the word is, and I don't know how you pronounced it, but it's P-H-O-N-E-M-E.
Phoneme? Yeah, so phoneme, the phoneme segmentation one is, and you've already looked it up.
I did. And it just, I, I was, yeah.
Yeah, so that just stands for the, the, the sounds in words.
Yes, the sounds in words.
A single sound is a phoneme.
And it just, I thought, wow. I'm still capable of learning something. But thank you, thank you for your explanation of what it is where, you know, we're trying to teach. The other thing, oh, this was exciting. I went to a meeting on Saturday, my tribe, I won't tell you who, but anyway, people that I've known in, in Chico for 40, 50 years, one of the topics of discussion was Chico Unified's push to make sure that all of our kiddos are reading by the end of the third grade. And I thought, wow, you know, they were, these people are years removed from, you know, having kids in the school and yet they were sitting around this room talking about what Chico Unified was doing for our kids. And I thought, we're doing a good job. We're still doing a good job. Thank you.
Well, thank you for, for that. So on the top of this screen, you'll see, this is, these are all the different assessments we currently have in grades K through five and the comparable ones for Spanish as well. And what we're proposing is that the M-Class DIBELS or LECTURA assessments replace several of them. And it's not like a one, it's not a moving out those out and putting these ones in. They're measuring the similar things. So instead of having our, our staff do like the basic phonics skills test, the, the nonsense word fluency one does the same thing. It will tell us, are they, do they know their letter sounds? Are they able to put words together to, using the rules of the English language? So it's, we're, we're removing those ones that would be duplicate and, and using the DIBELS ones because that's part of the new ed code. Oh, yeah, sorry.
I had that written down, so I, I'm going to address it now because that was my big thing when I was teaching, I was involved in the union and we would hear from elementary teachers, the, it was very difficult to get all of the assessments done. It would take away from the students and the teaching. And so I thought, is this going to be yet another assessment that they have to give? So I'm relieved to find out that it, it will be, actually reduce the number of assessments and give the same information, so thank you.
Yeah, at all of the, the DIBELS ones, since they're a normed assessment, they're, they're, they're limited to one minute. So after one minute, that's our little snapshot into how many, for example, letter sounds or letters a student knows and then we move on to the next one. And some of the assessments even, I know this is kind of getting into it, some of the assessments, depending on where a student is at, the, the system will actually say, don't go any further or back up and do this one. So there are some rules like that that go along with this.
Tisha. I was just curious, is, do you see LECTURA being used like at the Rosedale site? Will we be testing those, the students in the Spanish immersion, dual immersion program in both, in both English and Spanish?
So we're going to continue the similar of how they have it set up now and, and the same. So tests that exist on our benchmarks currently that we're going to replace with DIBELS will take that, that spot. And so it'll be a little combination of both. And I think too, we're going to have ongoing discussions with Rosedale as to which grades are we focusing in on the Spanish and the English.
So why implement DIBELS and LECTURA? We've been using it for two years with our intervention team and now Hooker Oak with positive feedback. It's on the approved list of state adopted screeners, risk screeners, yay, yes. Like we've said, the assessments are very similar to what we are using and they're normed referenced. And what it will do is it will, it will give us information to say, you know, if, if the student continues on with classroom instruction, they're, they're going to probably be fine by the end of the year. Or the student will benefit from or will need, you know, supplemental or intensive interventions to support them making those gains by the end of the year. As Heather said, it's become a new California ed code and it aligns with an ELA continuum that we've been working on for many, many years of making sure that, you know, we're assessing students, the appropriate skills and the grade levels. And it links seamlessly to our K5 literacy interventions because our intervention team has been using them. And then this information now done at a whole school site, whole district level, will help even refine that process more for them.
All right, so Hooker Oak, school-wide, has been using it. This is a list of the celebrations and commentary from staff over there. It has been nothing but positive. Obviously, there's a learning curve every time that we introduce a new platform like that, but the, the feedback that they've given is, it's worth the learning because it's, it's having a good effect on the campus. So they really like the effective data, that it's immediate. And then another big piece has been that Connect Home. It gives parents real specific tools and insights into what they can do at home as well to support and they can read it whenever it comes to them and it also translates to all the languages too. So it has a, a big scope of languages that it translates into, so it'll go home in the home language as well.
And then from our reading teacher and Title I teachers, they echo the, the pieces that Hooker Oak staff are saying. It, it's easy to use even as a beginner. Part of what we've been doing this year at our intervention team meetings is we've been starting each meeting with a little practice and. starting each meeting with a little practice, and, you know, we're all in there together, like, how, like, what do we click? How do we do this? And then when you sit down and do it with a student, like I said before, when you finish that assessment, it will automatically tell you kind of where they are range-wise. So it's, you know, it's not putting the stack of papers over here and coming back to it. It's like, you know immediately, and can already start thinking about, okay, what are our next steps for, for this student?
So, we've done pretty extensive work. We're very passionate about making sure that as we move through initiatives, that we get feedback from all different angles, from the admin team, from the teachers, from our interventionists, have a pilot in place. And we held on March 25th, a district-wide day where we went through a similar presentation with all of our K-5 teachers, and walked through three different options for implementation so that there was feedback gathered as to knowing that this is coming, where in the year next year would it fit. Technically, we just have to administer it one time during the year. We had three possibilities, and overwhelmingly, the feedback we got was, let's rip the Band-Aid off, we're ready to rock and roll. So we were like, okay. So we've been in, it kind of surprised us, I kind of thought there was a different option that would take the lead, but good thing I didn't put money on it, because I would've lost. But, so they are ready to go, and where we are now is really thinking about what is going to be our best way to maneuver the training and the professional development of this and roll it out. And it's awesome to know that we have, that people are ready to go, and they understand it, and it wasn't a big taking on. So the, kudos to the intervention team, our teachers that piloted it, and Christie's lead on kind of getting, taking the time to really understand it, and what it's going to, what it is, and how to use it, and what it will do for our staff, families, and students. So.
And I guess one of the other pieces is, we are looking to do this K-5. We know the law says K-2, by doing it K-5, and we, as Heather said, all K-5 teachers were like, let's just do it, like, let's do it. Because then we have common measures throughout all the grade levels, so when we look, you know, try one data versus try two data, we have consistent measures, K-5, that we can, to look at. So right now, what we're working on is drafting a professional development plan to get everybody at least initially trained to administer it the first time in the fall. We're sharing all this feedback with our reading and Title I teachers, our elementary teachers, as well as our admin, and we're here tonight to share it with you, and hopefully adopt DIBELS as our screener. And then, working with Amplify, just, you know, if this is the screener adopted, then we've got some, you know, dollars and stuff that we can start thinking about, how, how we're going to, you know, make all of this happen. So, any questions or about any of that information?
Not a question, but a comment. I'm super excited that you, that staff is wanting to do K through twelve, I mean, K through five. I mean, that's awesome. I think if we don't catch kids by third grade, it's really important to know where they're struggling in fourth or fifth, so we can remediate and hopefully get them up to, up to speed.
Same. I think the adoption of K-5 and of using DIBELS itself, which is such a well-known and research-based program, is a really good plan. Thank you for bringing this to us, I appreciate it.
Well, and it, I know it is not like a, oh, we're going to qualify you for SPED using this, but it, if it ends up taking that path, then that's just more information. So that's, that's very nice.
Absolutely, yep. And you can administer those assessments outside of grade levels as well. So if we're concerned about a student in fourth grade, you can give them, you know, it's not like this is only a first-grade assessment. You can really kind of dig into what their needs are.
I like that, yeah.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions for staff from the board?
So we are looking for a motion to approve it as well, so that we can move forward.
And I suspect you will get one, but first, I want to see if anybody from the audience and the public is excited to talk about the adoption of a reading difficulty screener. I do not see any public comments. Do we have a motion associated with this item?
Yes. Mr. President, I move adoption of this Amplify Education Risk Screening. Does it have more in its title? Edition eight? And I'm excited. If I had one of those paddles that you could wave back and forth that says, yes, I'm waving.
You and Member Olson could fight over who is more excited about this.
I know. I guess I will second.
Very good. Thank you both. Do we have any discussion or debate regarding this item? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
And I hope everything is okay at home.
Thank you.
All right. We are going to jump back then to item 9.1.2, and if you were waiting for that item, I apologize for the minor delay. This is an item regarding Chromebook, a Chromebook usage survey questions. I want to be real clear here. We are having a large discussion within the whole Chico Unified team regarding the place of Chromebooks. Now is not the time for the whole discussion. This item is specifically about what survey questions we're going to present to the public, parents, and our staff. Am I correct about that? That's all we're looking at right now? Okay. And then we will take whatever we get back from that survey, and then we'll have a much wider range of conversation. That said, please.
All right, I'm going to kick us off here with Tim and John Vincent, ready to roll on Slide Five with me. You are correct, we are here to talk about the Chromebook usage surveys. Tim, if you want to, you've got the clicker. Thank you. A little bit of background, a few weeks ago, at the April 2nd meeting, the board voted to examine Chromebook usage in our district at an upcoming workshop. That workshop planning is still happening, it's not yet scheduled, and the current step, where we're at, number three, is developing surveys for parents, staff, and students. So the purpose of tonight is to review draft questions. The board will look at the proposed survey items, ensure topic coverage. With that comes the confirmation of the breadth of the survey being satisfactory, and also to prepare for data collection. So how do we set the foundations for informed workshop discussion? And one last thing on my side before I hand it over to Tim and John is the, oh, I think, one more slide there.
One more slide.
Yeah, right there. The survey design considerations, and Tim and John will talk more in depth about this, but for the whole board and anybody watching to know, we look at audience appropriateness, which means tailoring questions and survey lengths to respondent groups. We look at the data usability, which ensures responses can inform decisions, ensuring items are clear, specific, do not lead respondents in any certain way, and clear objectives, so defining the specific goals for that data collection. All right, handing it to you two.
All right, so aside from the general criteria we look for in survey items, we take into account survey item types. Multiple choice, you see there on the left, is obviously much quicker, gives you easy, easy data to run, any statistics you want on it. Open-ended is, takes longer. So every, each survey you're going to see tonight has one open-ended question, including for students, and so that will be, you know, a place for people to let their, let their feelings, explain their feelings. So the target respondent groups, we have students, teachers, and parent guardians. Would like to start off with the student survey. So as of right now, the drafts are separated out by grade span, so the youngest grade level we would like to survey is third. So third through fifth is our elementary grade span, six through eight is our junior high grade span, and then nine through twelve is our high school. The reality is, is that the, as, as the drafts stand right now, there's very little difference between the junior high and the high school, but I think it's important that we have both those drafts, should we want to change one and not the other. So the spirit of these questions, I'm not going to read every question, the spirit of these questions is to get an idea of how much time students use the Chromebook at, at home especially, but also at school. The, we're very specific with all three of these groups, you know, how much time do you use your Chromebook at home for schoolwork? How much time do you use your Chromebook at home for other uses? We also get into kids' feelings about their use of Chromebook, and that includes breaks, screen breaks, given by the teacher, as well as teacher expectations on Chromebook use for homework. Is there any questions about the student, student surveys? Okay, let's, we can move on. Let's look at the teacher surveys. The teacher survey is essentially pretty straightforward, similar to, to what the students are getting, but how often do you use it? Do you, do you include breaks? And what have, what maybe behavioral changes have you seen in your kids when they're on the Chromebook a long time?
Can I ask a question on that? Because for middle school and high school, just their day is different, so middle school has regular, regular periods, and then the high school has block periods, so, and, and I don't have an answer to this, I'm just wondering about how much time do you spend, do your students spend using Chromebooks while in class each day? Less than thirty minutes, and if you're in a block class, that's eighty-eight minutes long? I don't know. I just think that needs to maybe, maybe I wonder if, yeah.
Or at least having those responses broken out by department, by grade band level, so we can see.
Yeah, absolutely. I should've said, said that at the beginning. Everything will be, able to be broken out by, by grade level, by, you know, school level, et cetera, et cetera.
So we'll know if a response came from a high school versus a middle school?
Yeah, absolutely, and what high school.
Okay, thank you.
And any demographics we want to see on the kids.
So, an issue I thought with that same question was that, you know, you're teaching your kids, and so even at the high school level, you wouldn't have more than two hours, right? That would be an impossible answer for me as a teacher. There's no way my student and my student would use it. So what I think you were trying to get at is, well, I'm not sure what you were trying to get at. I guess in total, a high school student could certainly use, you know, you could be using it sixty minutes in each class, or eighty-eight minutes in each class, and that would certainly be more than two hours. But if you're surveying me as a teacher, I know how much my kids are using in my class, and that's all I, all I know. And so the most that a high school teacher would have would be eighty-eight minutes, and that would be from bell to bell, so that's probably not likely either.
Correct.
And then at the middle school level, I, to Gail's point, they don't have as long of classes, so I, I think that question could use some refiguring.
Specifying different time period breakdowns for.
Right, I mean, just more than two hours each day would be an impossible answer.
Tim, can I ask? Can I just clarify? So when the information comes back for the teacher survey, you're going to have, let's say, of seven hundred teachers, six hundred of them respond. That'd be fantastic. And when those results come back, you'll be able to disaggregate them by elementary, middle school, and high school. And so when the elementary school teacher's input comes in, you'll be able to disaggregate of those elementary teachers.
Correct.
Did they use it for more than two hours?
Correct.
Because there is a propensity for elementary to use it for more than two hours per day. That's, that's how I read that. But you'll be able, you will be able to disaggregate it?
Yeah, absolutely, and we can get down to departments.
Thank you, John.
As well.
Yeah.
Any further questions on the parent, or the teacher survey? Sorry. All right, so parents and guardians, very similar, with one open response at the end. One thing.
I have a clarifying question on that, on the, the same one. So do parents have the ability to look at their child's Chromebook usage during the day, to have a better actual idea on this for the, you know, less than thirty minutes? Do they, do they have an ability to look at that and kind of figure, figure out where, where their child is?
They do. So they, they have access to Securly, which is a portal that's, is our filter, and so they have that on their phone. They can, Securly sends out an email to all our teachers or our parents. They can put that on their phone, and then they can manage the devices and see the websites that they've gone to as well. So they can use that to set schedules, to turn it off at certain times of the evening, or to hit a pause button and turn it off, and also to see what sites have been on there. It doesn't have the time, so it's not going to tell them exactly how many hours they're on there, but it will list the websites that they've gone to.
So you're saying they don't, they're not able to see how many hours during school they were using it, just the sites that were visited, but you don't know how, how long they were at a particular site?
That is correct. So that, that software does not list the timestamps with the websites.
One thing I'll add about the, the Securly question is, that's something that, you know, it's a wonderful tool for parents. We just have to make sure that it's known to parents, and not only known that it exists, how to use it.
John, just a clarification, so that, what you were describing is student use at home, correct?
So.
The sites that they visited and, and looking at the timestamp?
So there's both at home and at school, so parents have the access to that as well.
But it could be turned off, if a parent could go in and say, after 2:20, they can't access it.
That is correct, yes. So they can turn off, they can go in and change block categories, or they can turn off the Chromebook completely when they get out of school.
No access at all.
Correct, yes.
And I'll, I'll add, John and I have talked about the possibility of pulling usage data, perhaps from Google, perhaps from Securly, GoGuardian even. We're not exactly sure the depth of, and the detail that's available for that data, but that's something we'll explore.
So we're working with our vendors on that right now.
Hey, Tim and John, real quickly, if I am a parent that has a junior high student and an elementary school student, can I take the survey for each of my students?
Yes, yes. Parents will be able to take a survey for each one of their students, and, yeah, they, but one, one time each for each of their students.
I understand the difficulty of gathering a lot of qualitative data. On some of the items of the parent survey especially, maybe like items eight and nine, I might feel more comfortable if there was an, an other option where they could actually give a short answer. I think those are, those are the questions about your current knowledge of online safety, and do you believe that Chromebooks support your child's emotional and social well-being? I think probably a lot of people have answers that may be more nuanced than yes or no on those. But I also understand, as a survey builder.
Yeah.
Trying to limit the total number of, amount of qualitative data with the.
Yeah, you know, one thing we might consider, I mean, aside from that, is, is looking at the, at number ten, I think it's number ten, the open response, and make sure that would facilitate what we're after.
Yeah, I see that. Thank you.
I just want to piggyback on what President Lando said. I, I understand that, that number ten is there, and it is an open-ended question, and they can do a paragraph, but I. But I do agree, especially like the emotional and social well-being. Part, that question especially, I think I would agree eight and nine. If there was a, like, again, I don't know what you're going to use as your survey, but the ones, I use Google Forms for a survey. So, I mean, there's the ability to get, have the multiple choice answer, but then after, right after that, you know, if you have any, if you have any comments related to your current knowledge of online safety for children, and that could be, you know, a short answer that doesn't have to, you know, you can mark it so that it doesn't have to be answered in order to progress.
Yeah, one thing that we'd want to explore is the character limit on the short answers that you are both referring to. That's, it's different in each software platform, but we could look at that. We can look at what it may look like to have more open response, although it's really hard to get parents to take the survey. And we want to be as respectful as we can of their time. However, we want them to be able to voice their feelings. Okay, so the next steps, finalize surveys. We will get to work on that, taking your comments tonight into account. The plan right now is to launch this survey prior to the end of the school year. So, that would be sooner rather than later. For that, as we have other surveys that we're administering at the end of the year. Analyzing, we'll analyze results, and I'll add to that, analyze results. Like, anything that we find as far as usage data out of any of our systems would kind of, would be part of that analysis. And then, at the workshop, we would present findings to you. Any questions?
Any more questions for staff right now from the board?
Just to thank you.
Yeah, I know, this is, we've asked all of staff to put together a fairly weighty project, a fairly short timeline, and I appreciate the dedication, you guys. Wait, where? Sorry. And that said, I am super.
You too, Tina.
Yes, I'm very curious about the public comment. We do have one member of the public who's requested to speak on this. So, as we're thinking about what the survey looks like in finalizing, please take into account what our public has to say.
Absolutely.
Ms. Bradley, want to come on up? Thank you.
First off, I just want to thank everybody for taking Chromebooks under advisement. I think it's going to really benefit our kids. That's what we're here for. So, as I'm learning more and more about the process, I'm finding that it very... First off, let me just say, I am really focused on the elementary school level because that's what I know so far. And what I do know now is that all the elementary schools kind of have a little bit of a different policy. So, what I could really speak to is Rosedale and also what I know of Chromebook, what students are able to access on Chromebooks. So, what I would like to accomplish with this is getting better security on the Chromebooks. I would like to know how many parents know that their kids have access to YouTube and YouTube Shorts, Google, that their computer has a webcam. These are all things that I think parents have just trusted. I'm not sure that they are aware of that. So, I think that that might be, I'm not sure how we would word it in a survey, but I think it might be curious to know if parents know about the accesses. And then, they might be more interested in learning about Securly because Securly does give a timestamp of everything that your kid is looking at. When they open their computer, it has the tabs that were previously open, and those get all time stamped. So, you know exactly what they were accessing. The second thing that I want to accomplish is less usage. Less unmonitored usage especially. It's proven screen time. You know, we have all kinds of research at our fingertips about screen time. So, number one, more security. Number two, less usage, especially non-unmonitored time. Three, parent education. I think that's so important. I, as a parent, wasn't educated, and I think a lot of parents, again, going back to my previous point, need more education on their Chromebooks just generally. And then, the fourth thing, the fourth thing, running out of time. Oh, just standard usage policies across elementary, middle, and high school. And they can be different, but might be something we want to look at, too. Thank you all for your time, I really appreciate it.
Thank you. These are all important issues, and I'm really, I'm honestly glad that the board and the community is having this discussion. I bet you, we've been so gung ho about improving everything with technology that it's wise, I think, to take a step back sometimes and make sure it's doing what we want it to do and, which is, of course, educate our students in the best way we possibly can. I'll get off my soapbox, thank you. Do we have a motion associated with this item? And again.
I have a question. Is this a motion to approve the draft? Or is this?
This, yes.
This is still a work in progress because we've also heard from the public?
We have. Sorry, I see Tim come back up. Do you want to speak to that or? All right, before I do, and the motion can be whatever, if you want to make a motion, it can be whatever you need it to be, right? That's your prerogative. If you want to move that we send it all back and do it again, we can. If you want to move that we do it with some edits, that's, as a board member, the language is yours.
Well, I guess personally, I would like to make a motion to approve, but to take into account the input from the public comment, if that makes sense. Or do I need to reword it?
Is, does, does that give you enough direction to?
Yeah, and I think more comment as well.
Yeah. So, I hear a motion to approve.
I took notes.
With the understanding that you will wrap into the questions, the comments we've heard from the discussion tonight from the board and the public. Is that a reasonable version of your motion?
Yes, thank you.
I second.
Now, do we have any further debate, deeper discussion on this one? It's plenty to talk about here if you guys want to. So, I will just simply ask, and I should've asked as a clarifying question. If we approve this, what's, what is the next step? I think there was a timeline on there, and I want to go look at it again. So, if we give you the okay today, then the next thing we'll hear about it is it going out before the end of the school year?
Correct.
Okay.
I have another clarifying question. Will the board see the final draft before it goes out?
I can absolutely share it.
We can share it, but what we can't do unless we bring it back to the next board meeting is have the board approve it. So, that's just something for the board to consider. We can bring it back at the May board meeting for the board to approve the final draft, but then it won't be able to go out until after that date.
Yeah.
I like the idea of getting the survey rolling, just to keep this moving in the right direction. I see the survey is just a piece of the puzzle. And I think as a board, we all have opinions on this and convictions as it comes to the use of Chromebooks. So, not that I'm going to take the survey lightly, but it's going to be just a piece of the puzzle for me and just help kind of guide our direction moving forward. So, with that, even if the survey isn't in perfect form, I think we need to go forward.
And the survey, I think, will give us usable data even if it's not, you know, the world's perfect, perfectest survey.
Yeah, I appreciate that, thank you. That makes sense.
I agree with everything that has been said and appreciate the presentation.
Excellent, is there any further, oh, well, is there any further comment or debate? If not, we'll vote. Anything else you want to say before we do?
Are we making a motion to approve this survey?
The motion is on the table, yep.
Okay.
Yep, I believe you moved and Member Hayes seconded it. So, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you again, gentlemen, I appreciate your help.
Thank you.
Everybody up here doing okay, we're just going to power through? Yep, all right. We are on to Business Services, Section 9.2 of the agenda. Item 9.2.1 is informational only. It is regarding the preliminary design development update for Citrus Elementary. Hi, Julie.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for having us here tonight. We have some really exciting information to share with you. We are going to start with Citrus Elementary School. We do have behind me here, parents from some of the elementary schools. We have the administrators from all four of the schools we're going to talk about tonight. And they are here to answer any questions that you might have about the process that has occurred so far because they were present. And also, our facilities committee members are present as well, our board representatives and staff representatives from the district office. So, Citrus Elementary School is funded with remaining bond dollars from Measure K. In the facilities master plan, Citrus Elementary School was to get a light touch because of its historical nature, right? We, it's not really a historical building, but to us, it's historical, and we want to keep it that way. When we went to meet with the school and the community of the school to start the programming process, we were informed that their biggest priority was a TK complex, Transitional Kindergarten Complex for the school, which they do not have currently. So, it kind of slowed us down because we thought we knew what we were doing, and we took a little detour, and we had to go find some more money because we can't, we couldn't afford to do all of the upgrades to the existing building and add the TKK building with the current budget. So, we looked at the state refunded dollars that we've been getting through Fund 35 from the state for our facilities projects, and we were able to add some money to the budget for the project. Tonight, we have Maria Campos. You haven't met her yet, but she is the district's facilities planner and construction supervisor. And she's going to go through a few quick slides to show you the progress and what we have planned currently for Citrus, and then we'll open it up for any questions. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to share with you guys. We've been working hard with the site, our principal, facilities committees, and others in the district to get to where we're at in the planning process. So, this is an existing site. Those of you guys, I'm sure we've all been there, we've seen it. It's the main building corridor, some portables in the back, an additional four-plex building with library to the north. This here is a conceptual drawing floor plan of what we anticipate the TK building to be. It mimics what you see at Shasta and McManus, same district standards, similar layouts. This here is just a floor plan of the main building. We are touching the building very lightly. This site will require some in-depth site infrastructure, electrical, sewer, plumbing, et cetera. And we are also changing all the HVAC units, the heating, the, sorry, heating, ventilating, air conditioning system. New carpet, new windows, paint. It's going to be a big change for the site. It'll foster the tools and the needs the kids need to excel. So, just a blow up of the floor plan. There's still a lot of massaging that needs to happen. We will be in design for a good six to nine months, then it'll get a DSA, hoping to bid in a year. And that's a conceptual rendering of the TK complex. Is there any questions?
I just had, I was curious, I know it's going to be a light touch, and I know you've already had to have more money for the TK. But one of the things, you said new carpet, will there be new flooring in the, like, the main hallways?
We are hoping that we can do that, yes.
And what about lighting? I mean, like, the actual fixtures or the ability to change bulbs so that they produce more light? Because those main, those main hallways are just so dark.
So, I'm going to.
I'm hoping everything's lightened, brightened.
I'm going to try to explain something that our architects could probably speak more clearly on, but there are some regulations, engineering bulletins from the Division of the State Architect that limit how much money you can spend on a modernization of an existing building. And once you exceed that, then you have to look at the structural components of the building when it was constructed and prove that it meets current DSA standards. I have no doubt it does meet those standards, but proving that is very expensive and very intrusive. So, we plan to do as much as we can to improve the interior of the existing building, but we do have to stay within a dollar amount. So, we will do as much as we can. It is a charming, charming school, and it's been very well taken care of. So, it is a little easier to adopt, you know, what we can do there. One other thing that Maria didn't mention is that in the administrative office, we will be creating that single point of entry like we are at every campus, and that will require some reconfiguration of that entry area and the administrative spaces. Any other questions?
The other question I have is regarding the issue of parking. I know we're not going to modify the front ambiance, shall we say, of that school, but the number of handicap available parking to get to that entrance, are we making any kind of modification? Because now there's only two spaces, am I correct?
One, one space.
One space, oh, and I get it pretty often. Yeah, that, I know it's because it's small, but other than that, we're not going into creating more parking?
No, we are not.
Okay, thank you.
We are creating a drop-off.
Yeah.
For the TKK students. So, we're hoping that that does eliminate some of the need for parents to park and get out and walk their child in because it'll be right at the building.
Right there, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, do we have any other questions for staff regarding Citrus specifically? This one's just informational, so I don't think you need any action from us. But should we jump over to Item 9.2.2 and Chapman and Parkview as well? And Rosedale, sorry.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, let's do it.
We have been very busy on these three schools, and we have a fantastic presentation for you tonight that will bring you up to speed on what we've heard and what we've listened to and what we're trying to tackle. And this is for information only and we.
I'm so sorry, I, sorry, procedurally, I have to stop you because I didn't ask if there was any public comment, and we do have a bunch of members of the public here. Did anybody in the public want to talk specifically about what's going on at Citrus before we jump? and we do have a bunch of members of the public here. Did anybody in the public want to talk specifically about what's going on at Citrus before we jump? I'm so sorry. I just, I love to hear from them, so, wanted to make sure. Okay, I apologize for interrupting. Carry on.
No problem. This is our, this is our group that was involved in all of the meetings, um, here, you know, to answer any questions that you might have. Um, so, tonight, without further ado, we have Jessie Miller and Dusty Baglier from DLR Group, who's our architect for all three projects. They put together a really nice presentation, so we're gonna let them go through that, and when they wrap up, we'll answer any questions that you might have.
Good evening, members of the board. Um, as Julie said, this is a very exciting time for Chico Unified. We're very excited to show you the progress that's been made on these projects. Um, please note that we will go as fast as I can. I talk a lot, um, to respect everyone's time. Uh, but Rosedale, Chapman, Parkview, we've done a, a, a lot of stuff. We've been busy since December when we first held our first workshop. We'll go through that. We're gonna do a quick presentation reviewing where we've been, um, quick overview of the sites, uh, reviewing the programs, um, showing you some prototype options, um, that we've talked about with each of the sites, um, and then get into each, where each project is currently, uh, and then we'll talk about next steps at the end. So we just want, wanna spend a moment here on this slide. Uh, it's a, it's a lot of words, which I don't love on a slide, but, um, very important. We've, we've done a process for this pre-design, um, of these three campuses that have, I, right now it's showing four workshops up there, but each school site in Workshop Series Two and Three had their own individual ones, so it's really a lot more. Um, but Workshop One was a visioning exercise. We have a steering committee for each three, of the three campuses, members of the board, um, members of staff over here as well. Um, just to kind of have a, what do we want these schools to become? As we moved into Workshops Two and Three, that's when we needed to meet with each school and each community and each ch, children, you know, individually, and understand what makes their school special. Um, so we went through Workshop Series Two, uh, Workshop Series Three is when we started to start putting things in front of them to get feedback on, um, so that we could arrive at the solutions you're seeing tonight. They're not final. Um, and then we came back together, uh, with that initial steering committee as, at Workshop Four, to make sure that collectively, the three schools, as they're being designed, are each individually crafted to represent their community, their character, but also to provide, um, we know one of the goals is to provide, uh, a system that is cost-effective for Chico Unified as we rebuild these three schools, an equitable process involved, right? So that's where we're here now. We're on April 16th, uh, doing this board, uh, informational update. Um, we will submit, uh, a final package to the school board sometime in May. Um, so we'll be back in a month-ish, um, to present that. And then ideally, the, the future of the process is we would move into schematic design, design development, and get these projects ready for construction with, given your bond issuances. So, so far, we've had 139 attendees, um, in those four-plus workshops that I talked about, the steering committee members on the, on the far left, and then parents, teachers, uh, some kids have even shown up, um, which has been great. Um, and we're gonna work on continuing through this process to engage your community, engage the students more, engage the staff more, especially as we move into the next phases. We're actually working on a survey for the students to, so that we can get their input, and continue to get, make sure that these schools are not our schools. They're built for Chico by Chico and, and representative. So the three sites, uh, Rosedale, Chapman, Parkview, you probably know them well, um, but just wanted to kinda go over, make sure, um, the board's aware. We know they're acres. We know what years. You can see they're all built in 1953 or 1954, so it's time. Um, that's 75 years now, hard to believe. Um, but, lot of more parking spaces on these campuses, and there'll be more to show you. So really what we looked at is the programming of the campuses. Each of the campuses has a different current enrollment, future enrollment, using the projections. And we did this based off your model capacity information in your facility master plan that your team created, Julie and her team, along with probably everyone up here, sorry. Um, and really understanding what a large school looks like, a small school, and a, in a mid-sized school, right? The capacities and how they work. That broke down into our classrooms and flex spaces, sped spaces, and all of that, and we continue to work with each site to make sure the programming is correct. We talked about the prototypical design studies. We presented at workshop, I believe it was two or three, um, to each of the sites, different options and how we can make these kinda cost-effective and similar for the three sites, but also representative of their own individual, unique needs. At the, at, uh, what universally was, um, decided on was this pod concept for the classrooms. So it solved a couple of the things that we heard a lot, which is, we want access to outdoor learning, and we also want indoor breakout space, but we don't want too much of it. And so, trying to understand how to work that, um, the pod system i, is where we've headed. Um, it'll allow us to really, um, design the same footprint, which happens a lot, but then create this unique nature of it. So you're seeing here, uh, an example elevation of what this could look like. You see in the middle there, the, um, the, the flex breakout space that teachers can extend their classrooms into, do individualized learning or group work. Um, you can see that the classrooms would have lots of light, access to the outside as we do this. I mean, obviously, we're still a work in progress, but this is what a future classroom building of these three campuses could look like.
Alright, thank you, Jessie. And with that, Jessie mentioned that we've kind of evaluated the programs, the size of the schools, and what we were really trying to get out of the individual workshops was trying to understand what really was the character, what was, what was unique about these schools. And we pulled a lot of information out of these workshops, and we were able to come together with some guiding design principles. And these are what we're gonna use to try and make each of these schools unique, and try and make each of these schools match the character. Now, we, we mentioned a prototypical design, but what we wanna do is make them special and unique to what those schools, uh, are teaching and how they actually function now, and how they work within their existing communities. So, just to, I'm not gonna read through all of them, but I'll just kinda show you a few of them. You know, we wanna celebrate Rosedale's multicultural community. We know that it's a dual immersion program. There's a lot of multicultural aspects and, and events that the school, um, takes on, and those are kinda things we wanna consider when we're designing these schools. And as well, we have Chapman. So Chapman, we know that it's a generational school. Many of these students and parents, you know, are multi-generational students and parents that wanna be part of this, um, community for a long time. We know that there's, uh, important pieces to it, such as a mosaic, which many of students have contributed to the school. And then with Parkview, we understand that this is a school that has ties to the Lower Bidwell Park, that it also is a STEM school, so we wanna celebrate those aspects. And those are kinda the guiding design principles we were able, able to gain from these workshops. And we will continue to bring into the design as we go forward. With that, you can kinda see, I'll, I'll show you a few different site plans here of each campus, and we'll kinda show you how some of that has started to play out into forms and shapes on the campus, what it means to the existing campus, and, you know, how we're kinda tie this all together to meet what each of these unique aspects of these school are. So you see the Rosedale School here. We've come up with this concept that was really pulled from the community's information from the workshop, where we've got heritage, ling, heritage, language, and pride. Those were important aspects to the school. So that's kinda what we've tried to wrap up into the campus. And we've, part of that is, you know, of creating courtyard spaces and spaces for this community to have events on campus, and as well, use the school buildings as, um, secure perimeter, and so, and as well pick up and i, improve some of the pickup and drop-off spaces. And so that's kinda the things that we're, we're working into the design right now, or pre-design. Um, this is still very preliminary. And then other aspects that we're, we're looking at for each of these campuses, but what you see here on this screen here is all these shadow buildings. That's the existing campus. We're trying to determine how can these campuses be built, you know, with, uh, maintaining as much of the school functioning, you know, as we can while this is phased out. Um, we, we do, you know, see that there, we'd be some small challenges, but we also identify, you know, a way that these schools could work, where a good portion of this could be constructed while the school is still in function. And with that, with each of these, you'll see that we've kinda started to just come up with some preliminary massing studies. I know that, you know, these look like this, uh, is pretty far along in design, but that's not the case. What we're trying to do is just study what this could look like. What does it feel like on this campus in some sort of 3D scale? And we'll take these and continue to develop them and study, you know, what these massings mean in terms of energy analysis, how the school functions, and how, how spaces relate to each other. And with that, um, we had, we came up with, you know, some design concept information and some color schemes that we've showed to each of these campuses and worked with the campuses to find out, you know, what kinda represents their school. So, you know, the heritage, language, and pride, we start to capture some of the flow and some of the community events of Rosedale. And that's what you kinda see in here in this vibrant colors and, and this play, um, on, on this school's uniqueness. And with that, I'll show you now, um, we go on to Chapman. Um, Chapman, um, unique school in itself. This is the, the smaller, um, student population of the other campuses, but it also has its own unique aspects. I mentioned the generation, gather, grow, those aspects, you know, and kinda what we're looking at here is a concept of, you know, a concentric design of the, the tree rings and, and the school kinda growing outward from the inside. And what we've kinda identified here is that, you know, we have some, uh, additional aspects that we need to look at, such as the Sherwood Campus to the north, and those are things that we'll be, you know, looking at, and how those things interact as we continue the design. And what you see here on the phasing of the Chapman School is the challenge of, you know, trying, again, trying to make this campus, um, functionally buildable while we maintain as many of the existing buildings as possible. And so you see the shadow buildings there, and you can see that we could do a lot of the work around the classrooms and those pieces if we were to, you know, move forward with a similar layout of this design. And then again, with the Chapman Campus here, you start to see these, this three, three-dimensional aspect of it, the, the massing studies that we're doing and kinda trying to figure out, you know, what are the relationships of these buildings on this campus? How does it feel? Um, how do they relate to, you know, the, uh, surrounding, um, parts of the site? And, and what does it mean to this campus? And we'll continue to develop these, as I've mentioned. And with that, we have this, uh, design and concept and this color psychology that we've also pushed forward for, and got some good feedback from the district. And we, uh, of, you know, this generation, gather, grow. You see the tree rings. You see the growth and, and the, the ties to that, um, into the color psychology of this. And then we move on to the Parkview Campus, which itself is, is unique. Um, the Lower Bidwell Park, these aspects of it, uh, the, um, established community that it's in. Um, and we, we want, and when the, the STEM aspect of this campus, you know, is identified as unique and important. And so what we wanna do is kinda marry those two and bring that in. And we wanna, you know, accentuate the park and bring in some of the, that, uh, chances to learn. So we came up with this concept of park, play, and experiment, to try and tie the nature into the, to the, some of the goals of the campus and, and also reiterate some of the STEM, the STEM relationship to that. And with the phasing of Parkview, what you see here, um, you know, a large part of the campus, we would be pushing it or looking to, um, reorient some of the campus, uh, to address and be closer to the park. Um, and that's where we kinda would wanna look at how we could tie some of those aspects in. What we have is, you know, some unique, um, gathering spaces and some things that would tie some of that outdoor, indoor play, um, and STEM aspects, and we can make those unique, uh, outdoor education environments for Parkview. And this is kinda how that 3D massing starts to look. You see like, uh, again, a courtyard and a central area, but then you also see like an opening and some protection from the park, but an ability to address the park, uh, as well. And so that's kinda what we're kind of investigating, um, with this. And with that, you know, we've also came up with this, uh, design concept and the color psychology. And these are more natural tones, things that play into the more natural side of the park, um, things that are more calming, um, and, and, you know, uh, really attribute themselves to, um, safer psychology for this site. And, so here we are now. As Jessie mentioned, um, our intention now is to kinda, you know, present this to the board, allow you guys to provide us any feedback, um, give us some suggestions. You know, if there's anything that, you know, we really need to kinda take a second step and look back at, you know, now's the opportunity for us to kinda continue that thought process. And then what we would like to do is, you know, bring a full package to the board and present that, um, in the May opportunity. And then, as I mentioned, this is only the pre-design phase. This is, uh, that, we're not really designing yet. We're just kind of trying to figure out what we're designing towards. And once we get into the later phases, or when the school decides, the district decides to move forward with the schematic design, design development, and construction documents phase, again, we've went through, uh, the core committee. We went through the steering committee. But then when the schematic design phase were to start again, the idea would be that we could get more community input, um, and continue that engagement with the community. Um, whether that be backpack flyers, whether that be, uh, more, uh, community meetings, you know, we've discussed that with the board, and how we would, um, like to do that best. But there will be more opportunity for plenty of community input, more design, and then we'd be looking at more of the finite aspects of the projects. With the end goal, you know, to, uh, be building these schools in potentially 28, 2029, 2031, dependent on, you know, uh, the funding aspects, which, you know, have kind of identified a preliminary timeline for that. Um, the Rosedale School being the first, Chapman being next, and then, uh, Parkview being the la, the final one. And with that, I'd like to open up to any questions or concerns we have.
Could you see that I was waiting to raise my hand? Um, I, first of all, I, I am so thrilled to be commenting on this tonight. Having been with you during this process, the first, the first few gatherings and presentations, I'm back there in the multipurpose room. There were, presentations were happening going, "I don't get it." You know, what, 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 what? The last presentation, I, I was thrilled, because finally, it was like, "Oh, now I get it." And, and I'm so excited that we are, um, with DLR Group's, um, listening to us, because the, the changes happened, because I could tell you were listening to everybody. That, you, you can see now that we're, we're getting closer to being able to put together what, you know, what, the visual, visualization of the people involved at these campuses have taken place. I'm, I'm going to go back to Rosedale. Um, the, um, the schematic that, um, where are we? That's Chapman. There's Rosedale. Rosedale emerged, um, I, I, I don't, I don't think we were ahead necessarily of where the others were, but when this was presented, I went, "Yes, that's the identity of that school." That's, that's the cultural heritage, language, pride exhibited in what was being presented. And the schematic, the colors and things, if we could, I have a question. I've seen, you know, trucks and things go by in the world, and they have these murals on them. Is, can you do that on a building? Because I thought with, with all of the, the gorgeous stuff that you could present, with, with the dance and with everything else with Rosedale, oh my gosh, if, you know, in, in part of the area where the traffic and the drop-off and all of that happens, if, if part of that was presented with these presentations of the color and the flow and stuff, that would be wonderful. Um, I'm not going to, to continue to comment on the other schools other than to say that I saw the same thing happen with the input from the others. I, I do actually have a question about the, um, single entry for Parkview. It's not apparent in, in what I saw in the presentation. And so if you, if you have some way of explaining that that makes sense to this board member, that would be wonderful.
Yeah, first I can- Yeah, first I can quickly comment on the mural aspect of Rosedale. And that was something that we did uncover in those meetings. And one of the, you know, desires or requests was for us to identify, being that it's a multicultural school, some, you know, multicultural leaders, some people who are inspirational figures, who maybe we could then bring into a mural type of design on some of the buildings. And that is something that we would definitely like to look into going forward. With your other comments on Parkview, and we can take a look at that layout. And what we're kind of seeing here, if you're asking about the single point of entry for the campus itself, for the students, Eileen?
Yes.
Am I understanding that? I think what we're looking at here is having a main point of entry, when, when school's not in session, they'll go through the admin, or in session during campus hours, they'll go through the admin, and that's, our intent is to secure that. And that's why you see a secure kind of line of buildings, they're all lined up. And then the idea is, is that there'd be one point of entry, and we'd work with the district to figure out how that lays out best. But it'd be either be on the side of the admin and the NPR, or the side where the NPR and the kindergarten is. There would be some sort of landscaping, fencing, something there that, you know, drives that direction for the students. But that's kind of what we're looking at for one single point of entry, and kind of minimizing the options there by pushing the building's location closer together.
Okay, just put it in your thinking cap and, and continue to look at that, because I like the, the open courtyard and stuff in the middle and the working in of the school's ability to use the STEM characteristics of the area where that school sits, and have our, our buildings represent the best we can do. I like the pod concept on all three sites. That makes sense. And, yeah, the single entry, I see the possibility of difficulties.
We will investigate further, for sure. I think that's kind of why we want your feedback. I appreciate it. If we're, you know, that's our next iteration, maybe we'll take a look at that.
And the multipurpose room on Parkview, what's the increase in size? The one thing that I was struck with in being on those campuses and in this meeting is the multipurpose room at Parkview is kind of small.
The general program that we're looking at, you know, it's, it's built off of your master plan program. And what it looks like is the NPR is going to be about twice the size of what's existing out there.
Yay.
For both Parkview and Rosedale.
Yeah, that's wonderful, because that, the NPR at Parkview is a little weak.
They were tight spaces to hold the workshops. We managed well.
Thank you.
So one thing I would invite you to do is just make sure that you get input from, I think it's Kim that took notes at the LCAP for elementary, because the students had very, they had very particular views about safety on their campus. Chapman, Parkview, and Rosedale all had really germane comments to make. And so I, and one of the things that struck me about Parkview was they actually talked about how the park was, you know, that there are people in the park, and, you know, there was some, like, they can appreciate the beauty of the park, but there, they also felt like there was some safety issues with the park. And repeatedly, I heard in the meeting, like, the ability for people who, maybe outsiders, to be able to see students. And so that was something that, just for consideration, you know, it's, it's interesting, because Bidwell Park is a jewel of Chico, but the students were, were concerned that they don't want just anybody being able to peer on their campus. And so I would invite you to make sure that you get those comments, to see what they said.
Thank you. We'll make sure we look into that. I'll seek Kim's insight. We did hear some of those comments as well during our workshops. It was kind of a balance of both. Many people celebrated the park, others had those same concerns. And we, that's part of the reason why we've kind of started to build like a border of buildings, so that really it's the back of the buildings are facing the park, and the spaces that are open to the park would be controlled spaces, so that the students and people who are in the park, you know, we can control when they have access to view the park or to the park.
Thank you. I might add a couple of quick comments, and I will try and keep brief. One is that I didn't see, and maybe there is someone on the input group, but it'd be nice to hear from Sherwood at least, in regards to the Chapman redesign. I mean, it's a Chico Unified property, but it'd be nice to just make sure that we're on the same page as far as what it's going to look like and how the construction will impact them as well. My second comment was just regarding, and I'm sure, again, that you guys are doing this, a thing about sightlines and the ease of campus supervision during recesses and minimizing unsupervisable or less supervisable spaces. There are a couple in the design that I was like, "Oh, I could see if I was a kid, I would sneak to right there and get into trouble." Just, you know, keeping that, that angle in mind. That's all. Thank you very much. I appreciate this work. Rebecca, you have anything? Gail? Okay, please.
I have one more thing. I just wanted to say that I really appreciated the design concepts and color psychologies for each site, but I especially, I love the terracotta, like, bricks, the subway tiles that give that little sense of flow, like, for the ballet, for folkloric, you know, skirts. I thought that was awesome. And something just for the site to keep in mind is that even if, like, maybe a mosaic or, or a mural doesn't happen right away, just something for the site to keep in mind, is that I know that CTA offers grants for, like, that sort of thing. We've had, in, in my school district, teachers have written grants to, to, like, create student murals out of mosaics. They've, they've done some amazing things to, to just beautify. And so even if Chico Unified doesn't have the money right away, parents through teachers, you know, and students could, could still possibly do that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. All right, do we have any other questions for the team on this one? This is informational, so I just want to say thank you very much. Julie, do you have more?
I just wanted to mention one more thing.
Please.
If Dusty can help me get back to Chapman. There we go. Oops, sorry.
Keep going.
Okay, so I believe on this site, we're showing it, are we showing a future building?
We do, in the slide back. We did take a look at what, you see a future building there. There was some consideration and concern of what would happen if this campus grew and there was more enrollment. And that's what you see there. And you can kind of see, you know, we could build it right now, just plan for that future building, and then it could potentially fit somewhere in that area.
Yeah, so we do have a lot of development going on in that area with the Barber neighborhood. We have checked with Rob, our friend Rob with King, and he's assured me that we're not going to get too many students. But just in case, at least conceptually, we wanted to have a building, a future building, you know, placed on the campus in case we need to come back for growth at a later time. So I just wanted to point that out, too. And I wanted to thank Rebecca and Eileen for participating in the facilities committee meetings and attending these group meetings with each school site, and we hope that you'll continue to do so. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you guys. And thank you to all the administrators and community members who stayed for all this, just in case. Appreciate you. I know And with that said, if anybody needs to leave at this point, I am sure that the bid approval for Little Chico Creek TK will be fascinating, but maybe you have other places to be, by all means. Ms. Kissel, please.
Thank you. So, we opened bids for Little Chico Creek, Transitional Kindergarten, and Light Modernization of the Campus on Tax Day. And we had three responsive local bidders, actually, two local and one from the Sacramento area. United Building Contractors came in at $5,150,000 even. Slater &amp; Sun came in at $5,248,000, so very close, $100,000 worth difference there. And then Bobo Construction out of Sacramento came in at $5,599,616. Because of the tight timeline, we didn't have these numbers available for the agenda, because it just bid on the 15th. But we do want to move swiftly. We have negotiated with the staff. They're going to be moving out of their administrative office into the library for the last two weeks of school, so that we can get in and get their administrative office renovated over the summer break. So in addition to the classrooms, three classrooms that will be added for TKK, we will be doing additional work on this campus. We're doing this additional work now, because it will be a long time before the district gets back to Little Chico Creek in the master plan, and they needed some safety improvements. So we're doing those while we're there. We'll be modifying the interior of their administrative office to create that single point of entry, which they do not have now. They don't have a front door at all in their admin office. So we'll be creating that. We will also be doing a fire alarm, fire alarm upgrade on the entire campus, and we'll be adding a special ed restroom in their special, future special ed building that has a changing table for, if, if students need that. We were expecting the pricing to come in substantially higher, like 6.5 million construction costs. So we are thrilled with this low bidder of United Building Contractors of $5,150,000, and that's what we are asking you to approve this evening.
And UBC was one of the local organizations, right?
Yes, they're in Chico.
Thank you. Any other comments for, or questions, clarification? I don't see any. Any members of the public wish to discuss this item? My understanding is that you are looking for a motion to approve the bid. Do we have a motion on this topic?
I move approval of the bid.
All right. I'll second that, then. All right. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion or debate on this one? I don't see any. In that case, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Thank you very much, Ms. Kissel.
Thank you.
It is unanimous. Wait a second. I think I need you to stay here for one, for one more moment.
Oh, that's right.
924 is the Measure C Charter School Project Application Process. Tried to get away. Almost.
Darn. Thought I was out of here. Sorry about that. Okay, so, this is a big deal. When we were considering putting Measure C on the ballot for last November, we met with the charter school community multiple times to try to identify a way to divide the percentage of those Measure C funds that would go to charter schools, and try to improve on what we did with Measure K. So with Measure K, the money that was allocated to charter schools, 15.34%, was divided among the charter schools based on their ADA. And what ended up happening was some of the schools really didn't get enough money to do anything really meaningful facilities-wise, because their population was so small. So this time, we talked about maybe doing a different type of split. So 35% of the Measure C allocation, which is very similar, 15.4 or something this time, percentage of the overall Measure C, will be allocated based on ADA. And the remaining 65% is going into a pot to be, the projects to be decided upon by the Chico Unified Board, based on the meaningfulness of those projects and how it affects students in our community in the best way possible. So we need to put a process together so that you can evaluate the projects as they come in. So the facilities committee has met now twice regarding this process and come up with a draft application that you have in front of you. And we really tried to integrate some of the things that we learned from our own facilities master plan development, where the board had to make critical decisions about which schools were going to be prioritized over other schools, which is never an easy thing to do, because all of our schools are needy facilities-wise, in one way or another. So we tried to mimic a lot of those kinds of criteria that the board utilized during our master plan development in the application process. And we also created a scoring matrix that we would utilize to rank the projects as they come in, a scoring of an available 100 points. And so that's what we have to put before you this evening. And I would like to open it up for any questions that you might have about the process, or any suggestions that we may want to do. Having more eyes on it is always helpful. So with that, we'll open it up.
My first question is just, will there still be a process by which the charter community talks among themselves about projects before they come to us? Because what I really don't want to see is us having to air, you know, lengthy debates between different schools and organizations about, you know, where they have to basically argue over who goes when and gets what.
That's a great question. I also forgot to mention an important detail. This application process has been vetted with the charter community already at their Measure, Measure K, Measure C facility, charter facility committee meeting at the end of last month. And they had some suggestions, and those suggestions have been integrated. When we were going through the process of deciding how these allocations would be divided, it became very clear directly from the charters that they did not want to be put in a position where, you know, they have their own interests at heart. They almost described themselves as, "We're our own districts. We're all separate districts." So to ask us to prioritize these projects and vote on that would be very difficult, when, like I said earlier, we all have needs, all campuses have needs. And we all think those needs are greater than anyone else's. So, no, we're not proposing that the charters evaluate these. The applications will come to the facilities department and the facilities committee, and we will score them and go over those scores before they come to the board for recommendations.
And what is the process if one or two charter schools submit a whole flurry and are simply more proactive about requesting some of those funds, even though other sites might have needs as well, but are slower with the paperwork?
Mm-hmm.
Or frankly, just less pushy about asking for it?
Well, we will run out of money. It's about $17 million, and we will probably run out very quickly. The charter community has known about this for a long time, and they've known that they need to get their ducks in a row to apply for the funds. So they, there are several of them who are watching this process tonight, and if this is approved, they're going to be providing an application. And yes, not everyone's needs are going to be met, but hopefully we're very successful. And when we pass another bond in the future, more monies will be available for charters.
I hear that. I guess what I'm asking is, is there anything, and I don't see something like that, where part of the scoring is, projects for this organization have already been approved? Do we, do we look at the sheer quantity of, of... Do we, do we look at the sheer quantity of, of projects from any one organization and considering whether to pre-authorize another one from the same group?
No.
Okay. So one group could potentially put in for 20 projects that cost $15 million, and how do we, how does staff, how do we make that decision about whether to hold some of that money back for other schools who haven't applied yet?
Yes, I think that's an important thing to discuss, and I think that would be on the board to decide. If they want to give all $17 million to one school for one big project, or do they want to divide it in two, or do they want to divide it in three? You start dividing it further than that, you no longer have meaningful projects. But it will be up to the board to decide when they, when you're evaluating how it gets allocated and how much.
And I'm sorry for, to the board for just steamrolling right here. I'll stop in a moment. And I just want to make clear to the public, this is after the money that we've already set aside towards the Inspire Campus.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Yes. This is just, just new stuff off the first sale of?
No, it's new stuff off of Measure C.
Measure C.
All sales.
Thank you.
All series.
I'm sorry, okay.
Not just the first.
I'm a little tired already, guys. Okay, thank you.
And just for clarification also, the charter school would need to fully utilize their existing, if they have any remaining dollars of Measure K and their 35% of Measure C before accessing the 65% pot. So they're fully maximizing all the dollars that have already been directly allocated to them.
Thank you. That's useful.
Yeah, I'm just following up on, on what I think I'm hearing Tom say is that obviously if there is an administrator or a team at the site that has, as you say, everybody knew that this was the process that's coming up, that how, how will you in facilities? I'm grateful to hear that you guys are doing the scoring and going to bring it to us for approvals because I think that's, it's nice to have somebody with real experience and expertise looking at it at first. But, but I do feel what Tom's saying, like sites can be penalized by just delay. So I, I wonder if there is, like, do you, are you going to have like a deadline for submitting the applications? And how far out, how far out is that? And then will you not, I'm wondering if you will wait till that, I'm hoping that you'll wait for that deadline before looking at any, you know, applications so that everybody has, this is the deadline, everybody knows that this is coming, everybody has an opportunity to put in, throw their, you know, hat in the ring, and then you guys sit and evaluate.
At the top of the page, we have deadlines for application periods. We thought we would have two relatively close this summer, and then it would open every six months again if there was remaining dollars that, you know, there'd be an ongoing process. As long as the money lasts, there would be a new round opening every six months. I want to mention, because I'm not sure how much everyone knows about our local charter schools in the district. So several of them are on Chico Unified sites. They have access to the entire site alone. Nord, Forest Ranch, Chico Country Day, right? And then we have some smaller charter schools that are in public buildings, you know, are just commercial buildings who have been making it work, right? They've just been making that facility work. And those are the schools who are the most needy facilities-wise, honestly. So I don't think we're going to have a mad rush of like all eight charter schools wanting to get their hands on this many. I do think that there are two or three that are going to be coming to you right away.
Thank you. I, I'd want to emphasize something that Julie just said, that it does appear on the draft application rounds and, and the timelines and the instructions in the funding allocation Those things, the funding application paragraph and the instructions have been discussed with all of the charters. I mean, this is, this is something that they've been made aware of. They have gotten help where they've needed it and wanted it. And I think using the criteria that we have used with our facilities master plan priorities development fits the model that has worked so well for, for everything we've already done with facilities. So I'm comfortable and supportive of using this language and approving this process and believe that the, the charters have known and have gotten help already to do what they needed to do. And I know in the case of two that needed help, they've gone to architect consultant type firms to get that help. So I don't, I don't want it to look like we're shutting anybody out. We have included with open arms, you know, our, our charters, and the needs are in fact very different. And that's going to become very apparent when the applications and things come in, in those two phases in May and July before they come back in, in the December closing. And having, it just, I'm, I'm comfortable. Let's, let's just say that.
Thank you.
I would agree with Eileen, and maybe because we were on the Facilities Committee.
Yeah, I think so.
It was our understanding that this was presented already to the, the charters, and they had the opportunity to make revisions, even down to the breakdown of percentages and how important each topic was, and those were tweaked based on what they felt comfortable with. So they've been definitely a part of the process.
Sounds good. Thank you. Do we have any more questions for Ms. Kissel? Seeing none. Do we have any public comment on this item? No? In that case, do we have a motion regarding this item? I believe the action that you're asking for is that we approve this as our process going forward.
Yes, please.
Okay.
I move approval of the draft process for the charter applications for Measure C funding.
A second.
Motion by Member Robinson, a second by Member Conkin. Any further debate or discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Thank you.
Thank you.
9:05 on the clock. Let's move on to item 9.3.1, we're going to Human Resources. But this is a fun one. We are looking at Resolution 1685-25, Recognition of Teacher and Certificated Staff Appreciation Week.
Thank you so much, President Lando. So two things I'd want to emphasize. I'm going to work with the board president next year to try and do these when this place is full. Earlier, we had teachers, and we had kids, and here it's just us. So let's think about that for next year.
Please.
And I also want to emphasize that I'm going to recommend approval of a resolution for certificated staff, and Mike's going to read another one for classified. But in between those two weeks, we will be celebrating everyone. Erica and her compadre es may have organized cabinet to deliver some treats to each of the school sites to ensure that we're selling, celebrating everybody equally. So we'll be doing that on May 12th, I believe. So thank you, Erica, for organizing this. All right. Resolution 1685-25, whereas a strong effective system of free public school education for all children and youth is essential to our democratic system of government, and whereas the United States has made considerable progress in the social, technological, and scientific fields due to our system of free and universal public education, and whereas much of this progress can be attributed to the qualified and dedicated teachers and the certificated staff entrusted with the educational development of our children to their full potential, and whereas teachers and certificated staff should be accorded high public esteem, reflecting the value the community places on public education, and whereas the Chico Unified School District is keenly aware of the importance and impact of teachers and all certificated staff on children, and whereas it is appropriate that teachers and certificated staff be recognized for this dedication and commitment to educating students. Therefore, be it resolved that May 5th through the 9th, 2025, be proclaimed Teacher and Certificated Staff Appreciation Week in the Chico Unified School District and urge all citizens to pay tribute to our public school teachers and staff. Furthermore, the teachers and staff in the Chico Unified School District should be thanked every day for their dedication, professionalism, and for the services they provide to our students.
Thank you. Yeah. Before I open it up to the whole board, I just want to say that from the board, I think we all wholeheartedly agree with that. The dedication, hard work, the sheer amount of energy that our certificated staff put into our students every day is amazing and inspiring, and we are all incredibly grateful for them.
I want to say that it was just a delight when, whether it was listening to high school students or elementary school students, how teachers are so beloved by their students just across the board. And, and then just a comment, when my husband and I were teaching English in Korea, they have, they have a teacher's day, and every, every student brings their teacher a present. And I was talking to my high school students, and I said, "Well, what if you don't like one of your teachers? Do you just not get them a gift?" And they said, "Oh, no, that would be very dishonorable. You just don't get them what's nice, a gift." But I, in, in the Korean culture, teachers are the pinnacle of society, and they have, they're afforded more respect than doctors or, or attorneys or engineers. And I asked about that, and they said, "Well, there wouldn't be any doctors or engineers or, or if you didn't have teachers." And I thought, "Well, that's true." And so it, it was, it was very interesting seeing how profoundly teachers were respected. And I'm certainly, I loved what you said.
I would add, although I'm not a teacher myself, I certainly appreciate all that teachers do for my own students. And being the daughter of two school teachers, and even seeing them retired now, just the number of students and, that they had through the years. My dad was also a coach, so the number of athletes he had that still keep in touch with him all through the years and reach out to him, and my mom alike, and just, it just shows the amount, the impact they had years ago and continue to have in, in their lives. So of course, I appreciate teachers as well.
Do we have any public comment on this item? Do we have a motion associated with this item?
I motion approval.
I'll second that motion.
Very good. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adopting Resolution 1685-25, Recognizing Teacher and Certificated Staff Appreciation Week, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Didn't think so. All right. Thank you very much. And we are on to 932, which is Recognition of Classified Staff Appreciation Week. Mr. Allen?
Yes, my pleasure. So it's my pleasure to bring forth the Classified Employee Appreciation Week, Resolution Number 1686-25. And I'm just going to read it and, and go from there. So whereas the education of youth is essential to the future of our community, state, country, and the world, and whereas classified employees are the backbone of our public, of our public education system, and whereas classified employees work directly with students, educators, parents, volunteers, business partner, and community members, and whereas classified employees support the smooth operations of offices and the safety, maintenance of buildings and property, and the safe transportation, healthy nutrition, and direct instruction of students, and whereas our community depends and trusts on classified, trust, classified employees to serve students, and whereas classified employees with their device, diverse talents and true dedication nurture students throughout their school year. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Chico Unified School District Board of Trustees, if you pass it, proclaims that May 19 through the 23rd, 2025 be Classified Appreciation Week. And be it further resolved that the Chico Unified School Board of Trustees strongly encourage all members of our community to join the observance, recognition, and dedication and hard work of these individuals.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments on this one?
I, I will comment.
Please.
Three classified members were recognized tonight, I believe, and personal experience as a special education teacher, without a parent supporting me, I couldn't do my job. So my hat's off because they, I know how hard they work. They work very hard, so very much appreciated.
May I make a comment? Just that, you know, I've been in this position for two years now, this is my second year, and seeing the depth and the folks that work behind the scenes tirelessly, sometimes unseen, and they work so hard, and they, they do the things that, that make the system actually run. And I am honored to, to honor them. I'm honored to support them daily in their, in their efforts, and it's just been my pleasure working with the classified staff of Chico Unified.
Absolutely. I was instructional aide in an IP for several years, and the number of people who discover in those roles a love for education and for serving their community, and the dedication energy they bring to those positions is, again, fascinating and incredible. Very grateful for all of them.
I too, as a teacher of, you know, in Title I classes, reading at a high school level, which there isn't a student that walks into a reading class at the high school level that's excited to be there, I'll just say. And so I had phenomenal parent educators, but also at our site, we had amazing, universal employees that, you know, knew kids' names and, I mean, and cafeteria workers and bus drivers, and, you know, these, these people know our kids and are sometimes the adult that they connect with. And, you know, research shows that you just need one more adult outside of parents for kids to feel like they make a connection and, and can really, you know, it changes their life trajectory. And so I'm so grateful. It does take a whole community to educate, and so I'm really grateful for classified staff.
Absolutely.
Please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Having been one for a lot of years, I miss it. I miss it. If I hadn't had to retire, I'd still be there. I mean, they may have been trying to kick me out, but I'd still be there. There's just... There's just something about the energy of being a classified employee mingling with other school staff, I'm not going to exclude anyone, to help raise our kids. You just, you, you... I want to go back. No, seriously, it's, it's the most pleasure I've gotten out of life. It just, it just is, and I do miss it. I like being a board member too, but not as much as I enjoyed being a member of the classified team.
Do we have any members of the public who would like to comment on this one? Do we have a motion associated with the adoption of Resolution 1686-25?
Move approval.
I'll second that. We have an approval by Member Conken, a second by Member Lando. Any further debate? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much, Mr. Allen, appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right, on the home stretch, you guys, let's look at Item 9.3.3, which is the adjustment of the salary schedule for Chico Unified Management Association.
Thank you, President Lando. As you can see before you, anytime we have an adjustment to any of our salary schedules, we always bring those to the board. And you have in your documents, the KUMA certified management salary schedule as well as a classified management salary schedule. And you'll see in the background information, essentially, we had an audit performed by Cal, by CalSTRS, and it was recommended that we adjust the placement of our longevity stipend and have it be embedded directly within salary schedule, not have it be its own tagline, which, as you can see in the fiscal implications, for some employees who have not been at Step 10 or higher, it will positively impact their salary schedule, or their salary. And then every other KUMA member currently receiving the longevity stipend will not see a change in their monthly compensation. And so, again, per the STIRS audit, we needed to make this adjustment to our, to our salary schedule.
Remind me how many members of KUMA there are total, or roughly?
Yeah, I was going to say 70, but they're saying 80, so let's go 75.
75, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any further?
Just if I can clarify, when we think of KUMA, we're classified management, right? M-O-N-T directors, those folks, Sykes, OTs, so it's not just administrative, administration.
Yeah, and those are broken out on the attachment here, which I appreciate. Do we have any further questions for staff regarding this one? Do we have any input from the public? Okay, do we have a motion for this agenda item?
Or motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Member Olson, second by Member Hayes, if I saw that correctly. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And still with you, Mr. Shepherd, 9.3.4 is a discussion action item regarding funding sources for wellness counselors.
Thank you so much. This is really exciting news for us. We've all been anxious about the funding for a critical component of support for our students. In 2022, Chico Unified received some supplemental categorical funds, basically to support our students coming back off the pandemic. And we were trying to identify funding sources, ongoing funding sources for those, for those wellness counselors, because that funding source was set to expire at the end of the 27, 28 school year. And we're talking roughly about 19 FTE. So a lot of people providing a significant amount of support for our students. Due to Jaclyn and her team's work, we were able to identify some funding source that will essentially move our secondary wellness counselors over to the general fund, if approved, for the 25, 26 school year. And we anticipate being able to move our elementary counselors over to the general fund for the 26, 27 school year. So a year ahead of when we would be really worried about how we were going to fund that, you know, essential component of support for our students. So that's what we're asking, is for approval for this year, upcoming year, excuse me, 25, 26, to move our secondary wellness counselors over to the general fund, anticipating that we can move elementary over for 26, 27.
Thank you. And while I'm inclined to support this, as I am a huge fan of our counselors and our wellness programs, maybe Jaclyn can help kind of explain, are we, I mean, it's a limited pool of dollars, are we, did we find extra money? Are we pushing something else lower on the priority list in order to make this happen?
So really, what, what stemmed this conversation was when I was preparing Second Enorm for the Board in late February, we got that final unduplicated percentage amount for the district, and that pushed us over that 55% threshold for new funding. And so, in knowing that there's a three-year average there, and working with, a lot with Tina and her team on the educational services side of how do we make sure that we maintain this percentage, or potentially increase it, and which is really just a factor of identifying the kids and their, and their familial economic standpoint of the kids that are in our system. We just need the paperwork to prove it, right? And that allows us to, to receive the extra funding. So that's really where the, the quote unquote "extra dollars" are coming from. They were newly identified at Second Enorm in March.
I love that, in that wellness counselors directly support those unduplicated, unduplicated students at a greater proportion than the rest of our student body, so it seems like a really good use of those funds. Thank you. Are there any other questions from the board?
Yes, I was looking at the, the attachment, and can you explain going from probationary zero to probationary two?
Yes, I can explain that. So when we have temporary or probationary zero teachers, if they ever shift to permanent status track, they are, they gain one year of probationary status. So they come in that, that next year, the year that they move in to tenure track status as probationary two. So regardless of how long they've been as a temp or a probe zero, if we move them over, they come in as probe twos.
Thank you. One last, one last question, I believe that CUTA is also in favor of, of doing this. Yeah.
Good catch, thank you very much. Any further questions of clarification? Do we have any public input on this item? All right, is there a motion?
Mr. President, I'll, I'll move approval of... Oh, there's no number.
Nope, it's down to resolution, just Item 934.
Okay, I'll move approval of 934, of moving the funding for the wellness counselors.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Member Robinson and a second by Member Hayes. And any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, say nay. It is unanimous. All right, we are on to the last section of our agenda, which is board-specific stuff. We're looking at 9.4.1. This is a first reading of new or updated board policies for our new members. The standing procedure for these is simply that we introduce them, and then we basically have one meeting to all do our homework, rather than read them for the first time right now. And we come back at our next meeting with any questions or adjustments that we would like staff to make. Given that, anything else you want to say?
Some of you are AP students and have already submitted questions, but for the new board members, we do get revisions that come to us from CSBA. Staff then reviews those to ensure that we are in alignment with any new changes that have happened in the law or court cases. Sometimes they impact our administrative regulations and policies as well. Then those come forward to the board for a first reading, which is tonight, and then the board has the opportunity to look through them. We encourage you to ask questions, send us any questions you have, so that we can share those with other board members. And if you have suggestions for changes in language, let us know those as well. So with that, that's our process.
Yeah, I believe our May regular meeting is 12th, which means if you have any questions or comments, they would need to be in by the 7th?
Whatever that Tuesday is.
Whatever that Tuesday is, the week before, yes. So if we can all look at the attachment on this item and review those before the Tuesday prior to May 12th. That said, this is not an action item because we are simply looking at the new, the new board policies. But is there any questions or clarification for staff on this one?
I'm just curi-, oh, I'm just curious, so there were five board bylaw, no, excuse me, two, four board bylaws, and then I think it was 19 I counted. Some, anyway, a lot. Is that typical? Like, okay.
Yeah, unfortunately, it is.
A lot, a lot of it you'll find is real small language changes that are easily identified.
I've read them all.
You've got them all ready? Good for you. You're, you're one of the A students. I am not. All right.
I was just, but it was a lot.
It is, absolutely. And we'll always easily find one or two that are actually worth, you know, talking about, but most of them are dictated directly by CDU or California state law that just needs to be changed to keep us in line with the state. Any other questions or clarification on this one? Do we have any public comment on board bylaws? Seeing none, let's go ahead and move on to Item 942. This is a potential Resolution 1684-25. We haven't ever discussed board compensation. By state law, board member compensation is tiered depending on the size of the district for which you are a trustee. We do have the wherewithal, if the board decides to increase our $400 stipend by 5% per year, if we choose to do that. I'm not suggesting doing that now. What I would like to do is potentially put it on the agenda for our regular organizational meetings in December, so that when we get new board members, we can simply decide if that's an action we want to take. That's my entire presentation. Just, I know a lot of, a lot of other districts do it, plenty don't also. There's something we've never talked about as a board, and I was wondering if there's interest in, in looking at that.
I have a clarification.
Exactly, it's an extra $20, it's big money.
Right. I have a clarification question. It does say that it's a discussion action, so I'm wondering why we would not be taking action on it tonight.
The, the action would be taken would be to add it as a feature of our organizational meeting.
Oh, okay. All right, that was fun, thank you.
Yeah, for sure. Any other questions or comments on this one?
Jaclyn, you were saying that there, there, there may be legislation in the pipeline regarding this?
There is, there is, let me get the number. AB 1390 is current legislation that's going through the state right now that is actually proposed to amend the ED Code 35120, which dictates compensation for board members. So that's going through, it's been ordered for a third reading, so there has been a lot of eyes on it, and that would increase the dollar value right now from $400 to a maximum of $2,000 a month, which is what the current legislation has. If passed, and then that would, would require the board to take action via a resolution to stay where you're at, increase some dollars, all dollars up to 2,000, that would be directed at the board.
And that is coming out, when, when are they expecting to, whether or not it's going to pass?
This will be part of the state budget, basically, the, all of the, all of the Senate bills and Assembly bills kind of get packaged as one. So hopefully, we'll know by June 30, towards the end of June, whether or not this legislation was passed or not.
Thank you.
This conversation falls in line with other elected bodies. I know the Buick County Supervisors and Chico City Council have both, simply because there's no really otherwise set method for increasing, and it's been at $400 for a significant amount of time. Again, not a hill I'm going to die on, but I thought I'd put it out there to see if it's something we want to put on the agenda for future boards to be able to talk about. That said, any further questions?
Well, obviously, if new legislation passes, we're going to be addressing it before the December, right? Is what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
My understanding.
Yeah.
I would say the board may address it.
Right.
Prior to December, as an option.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Do we have, okay, do we have any public comment on this one? All right, in that case, is there any motion associated with this item?
Mr. President, I move that we agendize either in December, or if legislation dictates that we can do it before then, this resolution. I was looking to see what it is, it's a resolution.
Okay, I will second that. Any further debate?
I, I just have some thoughts, I guess.
Please.
Maybe it's my tired and fatigue setting in, I don't know. But I guess I'm going to vote against this. Only reason being is just with, in light of just some of the budget cuts and things of that nature, I just personally don't see any reason for a 5% increase, an increase in $20 each additional month. I know that impacts future board members, but at this time, I just don't see this as a priority for me personally, and just, that's all.
Very well, thank you.
So interestingly, I, I look at it and say, because it's so nominal, I'm, and Chico Unified has actually, I mean, Julie Kissel said they, they were expecting a $6.5 million bid, and they got a $5 million point one. And Jaclyn has shared that we are getting concentration dollars, and I look at it and think it's $20 a month, and the board has, I, I don't, I mean, that $20 is going to be life-changing to anybody up here, and I would think that the public would, I would hope they'd recognize that. I think it's really about the, I appreciate that Tom brought it up, saying, you know, we're public servants, and you, the board has been at this amount for, I, I don't know how long, maybe Jaclyn does, but it's, it's a token of appreciation for the service. And as, you know, we're here at 934, I look at that and I think, I don't know, it's probably worth 20 bucks to say thank, you know, money isn't the only way of saying thank you, but it's one way.
Any further discussion? So the resolution, if passed, would put this on as a regular feature of our December organizational meetings?
And just to clarify, it's making no current change, so it would not put it into place right now, the additional 20, the additional 5% is not right now. I'm just, I'm, okay.
I, I'm looking at Jaclyn's face like, what?
I guess to Kelly's point, if the resolution itself is approved tonight, then that is approving the 5% increase.
I'm sorry.
So I just want to be really clear about what the motion.
And then in that case, let me, okay, so what is the motions on the table right now? I apologize.
Motion of the Board, the Board Member Robinson.
On the floor.
To agenda either December or if legislation dictates a board and you do report, it is ready.
Yeah, and that's what I thought, I'm not trying to enact this right now. I would rather, just make sure it's on the table to talk about at the organizational meeting.
So add it to every organizational meeting this year.
Yes, and, and bring it back if there is legislation regarding compensation. Yes, and bring it back if there is legislation regarding compensation.
That there be no change.
No change immediately, yes. All right. Is that clear as mud to everybody?
Mr. President, I thought that was the intent originally, so.
Me too.
I'm with it.
Okay, good, excellent.
And I believe it's been 14 years since we last addressed this issue.
Sounds right. All right, if there is no further debate, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, signify by saying nay. That is four ayes and one nay. Thank you very much. We are on to item 943, which is a discussion-action item regarding a request to change the date of the July board meeting. Ms. Staley?
Sure. In past years, just recognizing that staff works all the way through the last board meeting in June because of the LCAP, we have traditionally not had a board meeting in July. This year, for very good reasons, knowing that we're having a change in the superintendent position, and a new superintendent coming in, wanted to have that July board meeting and not lose one. But the recommendation is that instead of the July 16th, that we move it to July 30th, which then does give staff the majority of the month of July to get away, get some things done, decompress, and most importantly, in my office, not make Erica do another agenda.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions from staff regarding this one? Do we have public comment regarding the date of the July meeting? Seeing none? Do we have a motion associated with this?
I so move.
I will second that. Motion by Hayes and a second by Lando. Any debate or discussion on this one?
Clarification?
Shoot.
This moves the July meeting to the 22nd?
July 30.
2/30, yes.
Huh?
July 30.
Oh, okay, that's what makes it good for me, because I have a conflict the week before. I have an educational conference the week before, and so this works out beautifully.
Any further discussion?
Nope.
All right, last vote was not unanimous, so we're going to do a roll call vote, starting with Ms. Olson once again.
Olson, aye.
Oh, sorry. No, I don't think there was a, yeah, that's the next, oh, I had, I'm sorry, I had, that one was a mistake.
Yes, Mr. Lando, she clarified with me before the meeting that she mistakenly put herself on that one and is.
We did have a speaker card, but I think, my understanding is that's not the item you wish to speak on. Correct? Thank you. Okay, thank you for catching. No, love it. All right. In that case, let's move into the vote, starting with Member Olson.
Olson, aye.
Conken, aye.
Lando, aye.
Hayes, aye.
Robinson, aye.
Unanimity has been achieved once again. All right, let's move on to items from the floor. Are there any further items from the floor that were not addressed earlier? Seeing none, I did not believe we had any cards for item 10. We move on to item 11. We do have one speaker there, and this one is yours, I believe, Member Conken. Vice President, take it away.
All right. So my request tonight is to agendize a discussion regarding school resource officers on our Chico Unified campuses. And I believe this is something that I've felt strongly for a very long time, even going back to when I was running for school board a couple of years ago, which at that time, we did have SROs on our campuses. And I just strongly believe that I made a commitment to my constituents, that I was going to prioritize the safety of our students. And I think we've done great things to improve safety, particularly the single entries and some of the securities that we've put in place on campuses. That said, I still see SROs as being an integral part of that campus safety that we need on our campuses. And I think maybe the public is aware of this, maybe not, but we did have SROs for some time, and that was because we received a grant, and that grant is no longer in place. So when that ran up, that money ran up, we no longer had SROs on campus. So I've done a little, spent a little time, spoke to several community members, parents who have students in our schools, along with meeting with some people at the Chico PD, Scott Harris, who was a previous SRO sergeant, also spent some time talking with the chief of police, Billy Aldridge. And I really do think that we need to make this happen again. I think that Chico PD is on board with collaborating and coming up with a reasonable plan where they can provide some support and make this financially happen with our collaboration as well. So I don't think I need to make the argument tonight that SROs are important and needed. I think that we, after spending some time talking with the Chico PD, I think that they are willing to come up with a plan, and we could have a good working relationship. I think the main challenge that we're going to face with SROs and hopefully getting these on our campuses, just seeing if we can find the resources and the financial support to prioritize this. So that said, I would like to request that we agendize a discussion regarding school resource officers, specifically how we can find the funds to financially support them on our campuses.
Thank you.
That's all.
And once again, I know this is always a sticky issue for us, not the SROs, but this process whereby this is not the time to debate the merits of SROs or the financial resources that would be devoted to them. We are only discussing whether or not we want to put it on an agenda as an item that the public can then come in and weigh in on. That said, do we have any questions for Ms. Conken about exactly what she's aiming for here? I think it's pretty clear from my point of view. We do have some public speakers signed up here. We'd love to hear from the public. Our first listed speaker is Gina McHammon. And thank you all who came for waiting so long to get to this one. I know it's a slog sometimes.
I feel for all of you. These meetings are long. Good evening. My name is Gina McHammon. I'm a Chico Unified parent, and I speak tonight on the topic of school resource officers. At the start of this school year, following the school shooting in Georgia, I began asking questions about the resources within Chico Unified dedicated to safety. I requested meetings with members of Chico Unified Administration and the Chico Police Department. I requested information from the California Department of Education, and all of these resources were very collaborative and very helpful. As I discussed this topic with other parents, I learned that many people in our community are unaware that the funding ended for this program. I learned that many people in our community also don't know what an SRO is and what they do. They are sworn law enforcement officers with specialized training and years of experience. I learned that reports from the FBI and the Secret Service, along with other research, indicate a link between childhood trauma, high stress levels, and violence. Consider the prevalence of trauma exposure in our local area. There was the Oroville Dam spillway disaster, the campfire, a global pandemic, and then the park fire. Chico Police Department and the California Department of Justice both published data so that we, the public, can see that the number of violent crimes in Chico has doubled between 2016 and 2023. The sworn law enforcement officers in Chico have not doubled. Most importantly, some children do not currently view school as a place of safety. How much can a young person possibly learn if they don't feel safe? I think of the students at Feather River Adventist School in December. I think of the students at Gridley High School less than a month ago. I think of the incident two weeks ago in front of a preschool and daycare on Fifth Avenue in Chico. In all of these cases, the first phone call is to law enforcement. I'm asking you to strongly consider that the time to actively engage with law enforcement and help fund their presence is sooner. It is before there is a crisis on our school campuses. I strongly urge you to research, discuss, and understand for yourself all of the things that I have discussed. Engage with the people who can answer the questions that you may not already know the answers to. Thank you for protecting our students, staff, and administrators.
Thank you. Our next listed speaker is Michelle Cooper.
All right, thank you for giving me this opportunity to support Member Conken and her request. Schools should be a place where every student feels safe, supported, and ready to learn. But the reality is, is that our schools are facing growing challenges, mental health concerns, bullying, drug use, and the ever-present fear of violence. In the midst of these challenges, school resource officers play a crucial role in creating a safe and stable environment. SROs are not just there in case something goes wrong, they are there to help prevent things from going wrong in the first place. They build real lasting relationships with students, teachers, and families. They become trusted adults who students feel comfortable talking to. That connection allows them to identify issues early before they become crises, whether that's a brewing conflict, signs of abuse at home, or a student quietly struggling with their mental health. They are trained professionals who understand how to work with young people. The presence of a dedicated SRO sends a clear message, safety matters here. Your well-being matters here, and you are not alone. For staff, SROs provide peace of mind. Teachers are not law enforcement officers, they are educators. They should not be expected to respond to emergencies without trained support. With an SRO on campus, staff can focus on teaching, knowing that there's a trusted partner ready to step in if the unthinkable happens. Now more than ever, we need to invest in relationships, prevention, and preparedness. SROs are not just about security, they are a part of a healthy school culture where students are seen supported and protected. Let's not wait for another tragedy to take action. Let's be proactive. Let's do what's right for our kids and our community. It's time to bring our resource officers back to our campuses, because every child deserves to feel safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next listed speaker is Roseanne Deaton. I take it that Roseanne is not here? In that case, let's go ahead and move on to see whether there is a motion associated with this agenda item. I would move to agendize this item as listed by Member Conken.
I'll, second.
All right. We have a motion by Lando and a second by Robinson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. It is unanimous. With that, do we have, oh, I have a note here to just remind everybody that we did move the May board meeting to the 12th, and I think we've already covered that. Everyone has the updated meeting?
14th.
14th? Ah, I can, all right, I can look at calendars. Very good at that. The date of the May meeting is Wednesday, the 14th. I don't know why I had 12th in my head. Yes, May 14th, which we moved, our last meeting, we voted to move it. So with that.
Here, correct.
Here, yes. It's a regular meeting, it'll take place in the NPR at Marigold. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
All right.
I motion.
We have a motion and a second. There were two of them. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and we're done. Thank you very much for your help today.